Yeah, agenda's complex.
Are you rushing me here?
No.
Oh, I see. So you're running it today, huh?
Yeah.
No, you wouldn't come.
Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission Board of Supervisors Chambers for the Planning Commission Meeting of October 24th, 2018. Do we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 You all, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I will entertain public comment and from members of the public. They may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda under state law matters presented under the -- this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And as a courtesy to others in the audience, if anyone has their cellphone turned on this morning, please put it in mute or turn it off, please.
Good idea.
In compliance with the American Disabilities Act, if any of you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please let us know and we'll accommodate that. Next, approval of the prior median -- prior meeting minutes, approval of the October 10th, 2018 minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the October 10th, 2018 minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Song?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitnatch?
Patiglano?
Yes.
Item number four, public hearing. We will now move into item 4A, Special Use Permit, number PSP 18-078, fruition, sales slash DBKO Design Build. And our presenter this morning is David Alexander.
Morning Commissioners. I am David Alexander, Project Planner One in the county's Project Processing Division. Before you is a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act per Section 15, 303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approving Special Use Permit number PSP 18-078 requested by fruition sales along with their agent, DBKO Design and Build for a 22,000 square foot expansion of a 20,000 square foot existing free packing facility on a 10 acre parcel north of Rosy. This is the vicinity map. The subject property is located at 42809, State Route 63, on the west side of State Route 63, approximately a mile and a half north of Rosy. These are the aerial and existing zoning maps. The expansion of the facility along with the existing facility will utilize three acres of the 10 acre parcel. The remaining seven acres will remain an active orange orchard. The subject site and all surrounding properties are zoned AE20 and is located inside the Rural Valley Lands Plan with a land use designation of Valley Agriculture. The surrounding properties contain field crops, orchards, and rural residences. The parcel is served by an irrigation well, a domestic well, and the Orange County Irrigation District for water and septic tank for liquid waste. Entitlement is found in Section 16, 2B, expansion, alteration, or replacement of nonconforming building and uses. The facility and use has existed since 1973, three years before the AE20 zone was applied to the subject site. There are no species of concern and no waterways on the subject site, and it is located within the FEMA Flood Zone X. Construction within Zone X requires no specific flood mitigation measures. This is the site plan for Phase One. This project will be done in two phases. Phase One is a 10,250 square foot expansion of the main building. Total size of the main building will be 26,750 square feet when completed, and Phase One is projected to be done within the next year. This is Phase Two, which is a 7,500 square foot expansion on the secondary building and a 4,585 square foot expansion of the Phase One addition. Phase Two is projected to take two years for completion. The days and hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Currently, there are 15 to 20 employees during the peak season in between October and May. Expansion will create an estimated five new positions. Adequate parking will be provided, 20 stalls, including one accessible stall on paving and base rock. Currently, there are approximately 68 trips per day produced by the facility. With the expansion, there will be approximately 92 trips per day. Caltrans has been consulted and is working closely with DBKO Design and Build to ensure that all requirements are met. There was a project review committee conducted for this project on April 26, 2018, PRC number 18-028. A public notice for the project was mailed to all surrounding property owners and published in the Visalia Times Delta with a 10-day public comment period. No comments were received. Ascend staff report. Do you have any questions for staff or the applicant?
Any questions for staff?
There was no comments. I didn't see anything here from the neighbors or anything. Do we have any complaints on file on this business?
No, sir.
Nothing on file? Okay. Thanks.
Is there any trees, it looks like trees, going to be removed in order to expand on Phase Two?
No, the -- it's existing footprint of the three acres.
Is that cold storage, the Phase Two? That was storage, I shouldn't say cold storage. Is that a storage on Phase Two?
I'm actually not quite sure what it will be used for, but the applicant and the agent are here to answer any questions.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing, and I will entertain any public testimony at this time, opening up for public testimony. Has anyone in the audience wished to come up and speak on this project, either for or against? If not, I will close public testimony and ask for a motion to approve.
Had a question, didn't she?
Yes.
Of the applicant?
Through the Chair.
You?
Is the applicant available to answer the question of whether that second phase was going to be used as cold storage? If so, please come to the podium.
Yes, I will open the public testimony again for that.
Good morning. The Phase Two, the little part that you saw off of the cold storage, that would be a staging area and a new loading dock.
Could we have your name and address, please?
Steve Molya. I live at 17064 East Turmer Springs Road in Sanger. The larger building off of the proposed one, that is just an additional storage area with maybe a small pack line in there. Welcome.
But it'll look like a storage.
Does anyone else wish to come up? If not, I'll close public testimony again, and I will look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State's Equal Guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved Special Use Permit number PSP 18-078.
I second that.
Roll call.
Song?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitnatch?
Patiglano? Yes.
Motion so approved. Moving on to item 4B, Special Use Permit number PSP 18-045, AT&amp;T, Streamline Engineering and Design. And our presenter this morning from staff is Dana Metlin.
Chairman Melis, Commissioners?
Morning.
This project is to allow the installation of a 100-foot tall monopole utilizing a monopine camouflage design to include support equipment on a 900 square foot leased portion of a five acre parcel in Camp Nelson. This is the hearing notification map. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff did receive a couple inquiries regarding this project. Two of the callers, I sent electronic copies of the site plan too, and I did not hear from them again after that. And another caller just called to voice his support of the project. The vicinity map, and the site is located at the south end of Gooden Court in Camp Nelson, which is east of Springville. Project is categorically exempt from CEQA per Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction, and the project is compatible with this exemption because the development of the site would be restricted to the 900 square foot project area. Entitlement is found in Section 16 of the zoning ordinance, which allows radio, microwave, television, and cell towers in all zones, and if it's over 75 feet, it requires a Special Use Permit. This project is located in the Great Western Divide North Half Plan, and the land use designation is mountain residential, and the project is consistent with these relevant general plan This is the zoning map. The project is zoned mountain residential. The surrounding properties are zoned mountain residential and agriculture, and contain rural residences and open space. This is the aerial photograph. Site right about in this area. This is the site plan, and as you can see, the camouflage monopine is not working. That's the next one. View on the left is looking toward the site, and the view on the right, the upper one, is without the tower, and the lower right is with the tower. And my mouse isn't working, but you can probably see it. And that concludes staff's report, and the recommendation is approval of the categorical exemption and Special Use Permit number PSP 18-045.
Any questions for Dana?
This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing to testimony. Are there any of the public that would like to comment on this project? If not, I will close public testimony and look to commission to make a motion.
Well, there's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with CEQA and the State's CEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved Special Use Permit number PSP 18-045.
Second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Song?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitnatch?
Patiglano? Yes.
Motion so moved.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4C, a zone variance, number PZV 18-009, Kenneth and Peggy Martin with Tom Hughes. Again, Dana Metlin.
Thank you. And this zone variance, PZV 18-009, is to request a deviation from a 150-foot agricultural setback that was established as a condition of approval for tract map number TM 813. Project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction, and the project is compatible with this exemption because the variance would allow one single-family residence to be constructed on the parcel. Entitlement is found in Section 16, which authorizes the filing of variance applications when practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general purpose of this ordinance result through strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of the provisions thereof. The project is located within the urban development boundary of Rancho Sierra, and the land use designation is mixed use. The proposal is consistent with this general plan policy. And this is the hearing notification map. The project was noticed according to the law, and staff did receive one inquiry about the project from a neighbor who received the notice, and she was just happy to learn that it would not affect her. This is the vicinity map. And as you can see, the project is located on the south side of Sierra View Avenue, approximately 222 feet east of Road 124, south of Visalia. Listing zoning is planned development, rural residential. The surrounding properties are zoned for rural residential uses and agriculture. Site plan. If my mouse were working, I would show you exactly where that 150-foot setback was. But it's not working, so I can't -- oh, sorry. It's right there. There it is. So that setback was established, yes.
Question, no. The issue is the --
I think the issue--
-- culture to the north of the road, Sierra View Road? Is that?
Pardon me?
Where's the agriculture issue?
Okay, the agriculture issue is north.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So the setback cuts right through these lots.
Okay, so that's going to affect all the other lots too, right?
The other three lots, yes.
So we'll deal with those one at a time, I guess, or what?
Probably.
Through the Chair, there are discussions with the homeowners association who would like us to make this variance for those other three lots as well. It does make them pretty much unbuildable lots, so.
Right.
Eventually, three cases may move forward.
Okay.
So that was established as a condition of approval, number 54, and the residential structure which building plans were submitted would encroach into this setback area for approximately 32 feet. Aerial photo. Yeah, the agriculture is to the north. There are mandatory findings in order for a zone variance to be approved. The first mandatory finding is that there are special circumstances applicable to the property, and the 150-foot agricultural setback which was established on this parcel makes it essentially unbuildable. The request is to encroach within that setback area for 32 feet so the single-family residents can be constructed, and this variance would allow the property owners to enjoy the same privileges that are enjoyed by other property owners in this subdivision. The second mandatory finding pertains to the fact that the granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity, and the scope of this variance is limited to the construction of the residence. The variance will be conditioned to preclude any further encroachment of habitable structures into the agricultural setback. Therefore, no grant of special privilege would occur because only four properties within the subdivision are burdened with this agricultural setback, and the other 45 lots need only comply with yard areas setbacks. The third mandatory finding concerns consistency with the zoning regulations pertaining to the site, and this property is residential lot within a residential subdivision and is zoned properly for rural residential uses. Therefore, you know, this variance would allow the construction of a residence in a residential zone, so it does not conflict zoning district. And the fourth finding is with regard to the general plan consistency, and the community plan has not been adopted for Rancho Sierra. Therefore, all the properties within the urban development boundary were designated as mixed use with the 2012 general plan update, and RMA staff has determined that the current land use is mixed use, and the granting of the variance is for residential structure which is compatible with the mixed use land use. And that concludes staff's report, and the recommendation is approval of the categorical exemption and the zone variance number PZV 18-009.
Are going to be right-to-farm disclosure recorded with that deed?
Correct.
Yes.
Everybody knows.
Isn't here, isn't it?
Any other questions from the Commission? This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open the hearing to the public for testimony. Are there any persons here in the audience that would like to come up and speak on this project or oppose this project? If not, I will close the public hearing, public testimony, and look for a motion to approve. Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with CEQA and the State's CEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved zone variance number PZV 18-009.
Second that motion.
Roll call.
Song?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitnatch?
Yes.
Patiglano?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion so moved.
Moving on to item 4D, GPA 18-001 and PZC 18-004, Alvaro Esparza Gonzalez.
General plan amendment to change the land use designation from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial. And again, Dana Metlin.
Yes, change the land use, and also this would require a zone change as well.
Any days off this week?
Not for the past couple months, actually. So the request is to change the land use from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial on two parcels totaling approximately 26,000 square feet. The project includes a change of zone from PDC2, which is planned development, general commercial, and the second parcel is from C2SR, which is general commercial, site review, combining zone, to C2. The applicant is Alvaro Esparza Gonzalez. The site is located in the urban development boundary of East Porterville, and the nearest intersection is Springville Avenue and Success Drive. This is the hearing notification map, and this project was notified -- noticed according to the law, and one person did come to the counter regarding his own property when he received this notice, but he was not opposed to the project. This is the aerial photograph. Site does contain a storage container and a mobile food vending truck. General code violation was opened on September 18, 2017 for a food vending business operating on the site. The applicant has been proactive with regard to remedying that violation. This is the existing general plan map showing the land use designation as being low-density residential. The low-density residential land use designation was applied to this site with the adoption of the East Porterville County Community Plan Update in 2015. Prior to this update, the parcel's land use designation was commercial. The county consulted with the city of Porterville during the general plan initiation process in 2017 and again during the consultation notice process for this project, and the city of Porterville has not responded, and this is just the dates that they were notified, June 12, 2017, and again, June 18 of this year. This is the existing zoning map. Oh, sorry, this is the -- yes, it is. Land use? No. Proposed land use is neighborhood commercial on those two parcels. All right, so now we'll move on. This is the existing zoning map, and the larger parcel is PDC2, which is planned development, general commercial, and the smaller parcel is C2SR with the site review overlay on it. This is the proposed ordinance map, which would really just eliminate the overlays on that zone, both of those zones. The purpose of removing the overlay is that this parcel, PD, having the planned development overlay, if this project is approved and the general plan land use designation is changed to commercial as requested, if we remained -- if that PD overlay remained on that parcel, the applicant would then have to submit another -- The low-density residential land use designation was applied to this site with the adoption of the East Porterville County Community Plan Update in 2015. Prior to this update, the parcel's land use designation was commercial. The county consulted with the city of Porterville during the general plan initiation process in 2017, and again during the consultation notice process for this project. And the city of Porterville has not responded. And this is just the dates that they were notified, June 12, 2017, and again, June 18 of this year. This is the existing zoning map. Oh, sorry, this is the, yes, it is. Land use? No. Proposed land use is neighborhood commercial on those two parcels. All right, so now we'll move on. This is the existing zoning map. And the larger parcel is PDC-2, which is Plan Development General Commercial. And the smaller parcel is C2SR with the site review overlay on it. This is the proposed ordinance map, which would really just eliminate the overlays on that zone, both of those zones. The purpose of removing the overlay is that this parcel, PD, having the planned development overlay, if this project is approved and the general plan land use designation is changed to commercial as requested, if we remained, if that PD overlay remained on that parcel, the applicant would then have to submit another application, Plan Development, another $8,000 to get the approval for a restaurant to go on that site. So he's already spent, you know, $10,000, and it just makes sense to remove that overlay so that the applicant can move forward with his project.
You know, the plan is a restaurant, then, is that what?
Yes, the plan is to construct a restaurant there. Tacos, wa, wa.
Hatika.
Ya, Walika, ya Walika. I think that's it.
It's a mouthful, whatever it is.
This is the site plan. Hard to read, but that's it. So staff is recommending that your commission recommend to the board of supervisors that they approve a categorical exemption and approve general plan amendment number GPA-18-001. And also recommend that the board of supervisors approve a categorical exemption and approve zone change number PZC-18-004. And that concludes staff's report. If you have any questions?
Questions for Dana?
Just, just one question. Looking here at the mentions here on Exhibit C, and we've got 29-foot worth of road frontage, is that?
Pardon me?
He asked, let me ask.
Exhibit C?
Is that gonna be adequate for ingress and egress?
Yeah, that should be adequate.
Gotta ask some questions.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open this item to the public for any testimony, either for or against. Are there any members of the public here that would like to speak on this project, including the applicant?
The applicant could not make it.
Could not make it. Anyone else? If not, I will close the public testimony at this time and look to the commission for a motion to approve.
I make a motion, recommend to the board of supervisors a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA guidelines and state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Sections 15332, Class 32, pertaining to infill development projects, and approve the general plan GPA-18-001.
Wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm on the other motion.
Two motions.
We need a second on this one.
This is the first motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Song?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
They have a second motion to approve here.
I'd like to make a motion, recommend to the board of supervisors approval of a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA Environmental Quality Act and state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15332, Class 32, pertaining to infill development projects, and approve zone change PZC-18-004.
Second?
Go ahead.
Roll call.
Song?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
The motion so moved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Moving on to item 4E. Subdivision TSM-805, Ronald Redfield. This is a tentative subdivision map and final site plan to divide 125 acres. Mr. Aaron Bach. You are at the podium. Thank you.
Chairman, Billy's. Commissioners, I am Aaron Bach, interim assistant director for Economic Development and Planning for the Resource Management Agency. And before you today is a tentative subdivision map and final site plan, number TSM-805, with a final site plan approval, PSR. The project is located west of Road 220 and north of Avenue 360, one mile northeast of the city of Woodlake. The project history, the application was received on December 2006. Site plan review was conducted on April 13, 2007. There was an updated map in 2008 with 48 lots on 109 acres. There was a planning commission denial May 12, 2010, which was appealed to the board of supervisors. On June 29, 2010, the board of supervisors returned to the PC to look at water, CCNRs, graphics, and safety improvements. The total time in process is 12 years, 11 months. The request today is for a recommendation of approval with findings to the board of supervisors to make a final decision on November 6. So what's changed throughout the time of this project? Well, we have a 2012 general plan update. We have the 2018 approved local agency management program. The lots on this project are between 2.5 to 4.3-acre lots. So as Lamp was moving through, we talked to this applicant. He expanded the size of his lots to match Lamp. Lamp now only requires one acre lot. So this was in mind of Lamp that he made the changes to his project. They decreased the total lots by five lots, and improvements to Avenue 360 are required. They increased the project by 18 acres from 109 to 127 acres, which now they have direct access to Avenue 360 only. And they have completed water, traffic, and biological and cultural studies and an environmental impact report as suggested by the board of supervisors. This project is compliant with the general plan. It always has been since Foothill Growth Management Plan was approved in 1981 and as updated in 2012. The designation is Foothill Mixed Use. It's inside the Kewee development corridor. This area was programmed in the general plan for development. It's outside the city of Woodlake's urban development boundary by one mile, and outside its UAB by half a mile. And it does help the county meet its housing elements and its RENA numbers, which we're woefully short on. So it is in the FGMP, but it's also within the PDFM zone, which allows for 2.5 to 4.3-acre residential lots. It is not building on 30% slopes. It is not impacting native tree species, and no waterways are impacted. It requires a water drainage study, and it requires engineered sewer per Lamp. There's also, under the final site plan requirements, they supplied a tentative map, so one better. And it does show contours on the map. You just have to look carefully. Under the subdivision map act, there are 43 lots. You can see the contours on the map. It's less than a 1% slope. The applicant has requested to do all the improvements in one phase, so this project is not phased. There are two points of access off of Avenue 360. There is internal roads which will be deeded to the county. This requires a drainage plan and retention of water on-site. And the improvements required for Avenue 360 to a 3/4 road standard. So what's different from the previous map? It's still zoned PDFM. There was open space on the old map for 14 acres. You're gonna do orchards on-site per the CCNRs, if feasible. The acreage went from 109 to 125, but that's so they could grab all the access on Avenue 360 and not be on Road 220. The average size of the lot went from 1.8 acres, which still would comply with Lamp, but we didn't know they were gonna give us such a break. So he's kept his acreage at 2.5. There was 48 single-family residents. Now we're down to 43. There was access points proposed on Road 220. Now we have two access points proposed on Avenue 360. There was a PVAE, private driveway before. Now they're going to deed the roads to the county. The water sustainability report was not there. They were gonna do individual wells in the first instance. Now they're talking about a community water system, and we have a water sustainability report in our environmental impact report. As far as wastewater, originally conventional septic. Obviously, it doesn't fly under Lamp anymore, so engineered systems and compliance with Lamp would be required for this project. Sequel-wise, it wasn't M&amp;D before. Now it's a full EIR. So as far as the site conditions, you can see there are two existing water courses that pushes the water around the site to the north and to the south. It does get fairly close to the parcel on the southeast corner, but again, Lamp has its setbacks requirement, so there's no potential issue of any pollution of that waterway. And as you can see from that arrow, it's set back, you know, pretty much on average 650 feet, but it gets greater than that around the northeast side of the project, which is not a park. The waterways are completely outside of this project. The improvements would be roughly for 1,000 linear feet across Avenue 360. Drainage concerns would be fixed through the improvement process in the final map, or addressed in the final map. Road 220 is a dead-end road, so no improvements are required on Road 220. Under SEQA, there was a sustainability water study. Domestic use was attributed to 500 gallons per house. So typical household shows 43 units will use 7.8 million gallons, 24 acre feet a year. Condition of approval requires a community water supply. This was proposed by the applicant, which will have to be approved by the state Water Resources Control Board. So based on an average, all the houses in the state versus statewide water usage, this was a very conservative approach to get to that 500 gallons per house. And that was done by Consul, who's a reputed engineer. Exeter Urban Water Management Plan from 2011, just to show how conservative that 500 gallons per house is. It's 235 gallons per day. Typical agriculture use is three acre feet per year, so 324 acre feet, which is approximately 1,344% more than the household. And then on top of that, the study looked at the whole Cottonwood Basin. 113,000 acre feet of precipitation results in only 0.02% of the whole Cottonwood Basin being used, water being used for residential currently. Considering some ag use will remain on these lots per the CCNRs, and some landscaping, which will also have to be in compliance with Moelo, that's still a reduction against the baseline. So there will be no significant effect under SEQA. And if we look further into it, sigma will further reduce the risk to overdrafting. Without contrary, substantial professional evidence entered into the public record, there is substantial evidence by the consulting engineer supporting a sustainable water supply to this project. As far as utilities, I know there were some concerns about sewage. Condition of approval 55 makes the project consistent with Lamp, local agency management program, which requires submission of a sewage disposal plan completed by a professional designer and as approved by the environmental health department. Alternatively, and this is not a requirement at this time, the applicant could build a community septic system if determined to be more feasible. And I think the applicant will have to look at this hard, because Lamp's got additional costs that could run roughly $30,000 per unit. You do the math. It may make more sense to do a community septic system. As far as water, the county requirements, the minimum of 12,500 square feet, obviously 2.5 acres is more. And they're gonna use community water services. There will also be requirements for conservation fixtures and our Moelo, the water-efficient landscape ordinance. Drainage, the stormwater facilities will be detained and retained within the project area. Originally, we had a condition on there from Public Works suggesting that they run water to other water facilities. We changed that condition in discussions with the city and as a pretty standard condition on a lot of the rest of our subdivisions. Because it's in a rural area, that's the standard under the FGMP, but we went one better here. And we're gonna make them do a hydraulic study and retain the water on-site. As far as policing, we did call the assistant sheriff, and she estimates response within five minutes. And sheriff's office provides night dispatch of both Woodlake PD and deputy sheriffs. As far as fire, and this is where the FGMP and PDFM has very high standards, are addressed in the general plan and zoning code, and states the requirements for fire protection for projects within the area. The fire department submitted additional comments for approval. We added all the FGMP and PDFM standards as conditions of approval to this project. And obviously, the owner has brought in adequate power supplies. As far as biological and cultural, Live Oak Associates, Austin Pearson, did a biological study on the site. Potential impacts were mitigated to the species of concern, again, potential. CDFW made comments based on aerial imagery. No species of concerns were found on the site, but mitigation measures were enhanced. We did enhance the mitigation measures in the SEQA document based on their concerns to include focused surveys and actions if habitat or species are discovered. Similar with a cultural study, which was done by Sierra Valley, Christina Roper. Finding no impact to cultural resource, but standard conditions apply if cultural resource is found during construction. Transportation, which was one of the concerns that went through the first time. There are 409 daily trips. As far as peak shifts in peak, 32 in the morning, 43 in the afternoon peak. Intersection of driveway Avenue 360 is at a level of service A. Segment peak hour operations level of service C for Avenue 360, Sentinel Drive, Road 212. The cumulative gets to about 125 average daily trips, which would pretty much be a LOSC. The average annual, along the avenue, average daily traffic, Avenue 360 ADT volume could get up to 668 in the cumulative, still within the level of service C. So it doesn't exceed any thresholds. There was, also found in the report, there is adequate safety for emergency vehicles. And as stated previously, there will be improvements made to the Avenue 360 out in front of the project area. Agriculture, the uniform rules of the county do not speak to the PDFM zone. Land in PD already zoned, is already zoned for development. Ag is not considered the highest and best use within the PDF zone, PDFM zone. Less than a percent of all the ag land in the county will be impacted by this project. There's no cumulative threat to the loss of agricultural land through this project. Under the Foothill Combining Zone, F-zone must have a site plan for an allowed use in an agricultural preserve. There is an agricultural preserve on the southern portion of this property for the next two months. This is consistent with the general plan and zoning, and an FNR was complete, completes at the end of December 12, '31, 2018. The project application, as I remind you, was received in 2006. Other conditions of approval, all improvements are in accordance with the FGMP and PDFM zones. Avenue 360 long frontage of the subdivision under the FGMP for ADT less than 400 will require a 28-foot travel lane. Note that final maps cannot be denied because of off-site improvements. In other words, they could bond up for that as well as, or build it. The two north-south roadways shall have a 60-foot rights-of-way on the interior roadways and shall have a 56-foot right-of-way. The drainage erosion control plan, as suggested by the city, would be a requirement of the final map. Storm drainage plan would look at 10-year, 24-hour event. And as we stated before in discussions with the city, we are requiring it to be detained on-site. There is the requirement also of formation of an assessment district for maintenance of public infrastructure, including road weights and a landscaping and lighting district. Obviously, this will be in compliance with the updated well ordinance for the community wells as approved by the state Water Resources Control Board, so not just approved by environmental health. And this will meet all the safety element fire standards. There is also covenants, codes, and restrictions as one of the requirements from the board to look at by this planning commission were CCNRs. to look at by this planning commission or CCNRs, borrowing from other CCNRs we've had done in this county. We are looking at creation of an architectural committee, shall set, which shall set forth plot plans, building plans, and elevations that will contain the position of the house, position of the parking area, fencing details, a location plan of septic tanks and leach lines, dwelling construction standards, location of any structures to be placed upon the property, the location of physical features, areas to be declared of vegetation shall be delineated on the plot plans. And so what this boils down to is colors and water fixtures shall be earth toned to blend with the environment. The buildings shall be sited to not block views, and the homeowners shall maintain trees in an orchid-like state if found feasible. These are some of the surrounding views of the site. You can see the existing drainage that carries water away to the south outside of the property boundaries, and these are some of the northeast views from the northeast corner of the property looking northwest. So in response to the city's comments we received, we provided you the package as a response memo from us to the city comments. The mitigation for ag land is not required as discussed above. They were suggesting mitigations. We said those are not required per the SEQA document. The processing of entitlements on Williamson Act lands is allowed by government code. No development will occur before the Williamson Act contract expires in two months, since no impact to agricultural land. None of the information provided, that the county provided to all the responsible agencies and to the public deterred them from making formed comments. There's nothing in the record to say otherwise. There's not evidence by any statements by the city by itself. Water calculations were made by an expert water engineer. The city comment is not made by a water engineer or an expert. The type of water supply does not change analysis of availability because the community water supply was not necessarily stated as a source of water to the properties. It's not changed the analysis. The water study itself just looks at water availability, not how it gets to each house. The type of water supply does not change the analysis. The project does not meet the park threshold requirements in the county of six to 1,000 persons. There are obviously not 1,000 persons in this project. The project will not impact existing water facilities. A condition of approval requires detention of water, stormwater on site. The county no longer has a, there was a question about process and whether this fulfilled the process of the county. The county no longer has a preliminary site plan review process. That was changed in The board directed us to bring this project back to the planning commission that, that does not require any more process than just doing that. So this project has completed the process. As this is the final site plan, it has naturally changed through the course of all these years. As the applicant has tried to address all the comments and all of our county's concerns, it does not require going back to a process that doesn't exist anymore. This project was a complete application as it was processed. It's a little late in the game to say it wasn't complete if we got it to this point, and remanded to the PC by the Board of Supervisors to only look at water, CCNRs, only look at water, CCNRs, and traffic, and we are looking at a whole lot more here. The county sufficiently addressed the city's concerns in the EIR. Under SEQA law, the county has performed a good faith effort in completing this process under SEQA. And that completes staff's report. If you have any questions for me, the applicant's agent's also available, and Hector is here too to answer any of your SEQA questions.
Any questions?
In your report here, it says they require to retain all stormwater on, on property except for curb water. Where does that water go?
That will generally go into the water facilities for the county, and that would also be required to find a way to be detained on site, but obviously in an overflow condition, it would make its way out there, but that's, at that point, every, yeah. Yeah, and like previous subdivisions in the PDFM zone were just made to run to natural waterways. They're going after detain that on site.
Aaron, do you recall why the planning commission denied this project initially?
I think those were water. I think the planning commission wanted more SEQA done. Most of you were here. So we did that. I think there was some discussion about septic tanks, and I think LAMP covers that, and I think as far as road conditions and a traffic study, and there was concerns about traffic, this project generating too much traffic. It is no doubt going to create a little bit of an impact to the neighbors, but not necessarily an impact under SEQA because it doesn't exceed any thresholds. There was concerns about safety and whether the roads are wide enough, as is a concern of a lot of our projects in these rural areas. Is it wide enough to address safety or garbage or oversized trucks? The VRPA, the consultant, found that it was sufficient. So those matters are addressed, and as much as we can force the developer to do off-site improvements, and as much as we have NEXUS to do so, we have required them to do so along the frontage of their property. So I think those were the main concerns by the planning commission, and I think this project addresses those.
There's also a term, currently one of their, where the road, and so you can't get out, or the road washes away.
I think that was along Road 220, and this is all on Road Avenue 360, and so some of those concerns are addressed, and this project would fix those main drainage areas along Avenue 360. Yeah, I mean, it might have been more than just Road 220, but this project will address those. Again, under SEQA, we're not worried about the impacts of the existing conditions to the people who are going to live here in the future, but this project will try to fix as many of those existing conditions as we can reasonably make them fix under SEQA and under NEXUS law.
To Hector, we're a chief environmental officer. This memorandum we just received, this is the response to the city?
Correct. The city submitted some comments.
Did they, did they feed back on this at all? No time to do it?
Well, through the chair, this is the surrey buttle. They answered a first time to our SEQA document, and then they answered our final, final EIR and our conditions of approval. So they got another bite at the apple, and this is our response to those comments. A lot of them are very similar to the initial comments. There wasn't too much variation in there. We had already responded to, but we got to respond to them again.
Any other questions? From the commission? If not, this is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the hearing on this issue to the public for comment. Question I have to the public, how many of you are here to address this project? Show of hands. How many are opposed? How many are for the project?
Opposed.
Opposed? How many are for? Okay, could we please have the applicant for the project come up and speak if he's here first, and then we'll take...
And if the chair could also remind people to keep their comments.
And we will remind people that repetitive remarks are not encouraged.
Or things that are already in the record.
That have already been covered. Please introduce yourself, name and address.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Boyd. I am the attorney working with Ron Redfield. My business address is 275 South Madera Avenue, Suite 100 in Kermin, California. I have with me Ron Redfield, who is the applicant.
Address?
Yes, 21606 Avenue 360, Woodlake.
Thank you very much. Comments that I have are questions on the project. This is going to be developed by a single developer, a contractor that builds these homes? Are these custom homes? What are they specifically?
Right now, we would be selling the lots, I believe we were going, we've looked at different alternatives of doing custom development or a subdivision.
Are you selling lots or are you selling homes?
We would be, we would be selling the, the whole subdivision.
A whole subdivision.
For development.
By, by a builder?
Yes, by a builder.
Or multiple builders?
By a builder unless we, well, I don't think we've come up to with a decision if we're going to do custom homes or, or a planned, a single developer.
Minimum square footage, anything like that?
We've discussed minimum square footage. We don't want to, we don't want to limit it. That would be included in the CCNRs that has been discussed, so it was to maintain the beauty of the area. The minimum square footage would not be so cumbersome as to, as to, to preclude a great deal, but yes, there would be a minimum square footage, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, we don't know for sure, but probably somewhere in the neighborhood of like 1,200 square feet.
Is Redfield a contractor, electrical?
No, I'm a real estate broker and a farmer.
Anybody else have any questions? For the developer? No? Thank you very much then. Would anyone else like to come up and speak either for or against the project? State your name and address, please.
My name is Everett Welch. Address is 21248 Avenue 360 in Woodlake, California. I have some pictures. I don't quite know how to, I don't have a PowerPoint. You can have them, Bill. You'll have to pass those around. I only have one picture each. Apologize to several of you. I've been here, I think, twice and testified against this project, but I'm here again. My wife and I, my wife was just here, but she had to leave for an appointment, but we'd like to share, and these are hers also, brief comments about this project. Number one is water. I know I've said this over and over, many times. I've lived in that valley for 73 years. I know I don't look a day over 95, but I have, I've lived out there for a long time, and my grandfather farmed probably 120 acres when I was a kid. Citrus, grapes, and permanent pasture. That's all gone today because the lack of water. We have two neighbors that have abandoned 40 acres, two 40-acre parts, 140 and 120, that were in olives, and they drilled deep wells, 500 to 800 feet. One neighbor drilled, I think he told me, close to 20 on 40 acres, and every one of them have gone dry, and he's abandoned it. Now, I made these comments relative to the EIR, and I was told that I didn't know what I was talking about. Well, I probably don't, but having lived there that long and seen the water woes, things that have happened, it's, it's a terrible water area. Even the Redfield project, I think he's drilled 18-plus wells out there. Many of them are capped because they went dry, so I don't know how they can sustain this. And also, in the question I have, you mentioned the amount of water each lot would be able to use for landscaping. Can they, can they irrigate for permanent pasture for cattle and horses and that sort of thing? What's that?
Through the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, can you readdress the question to the planning commission?
One concern I have, they talked about the amount of water usage per lot, and those lots are up to four acres, I believe. Can they irrigate permanent pasture, which uses much more water than a household or a landscape? That was my question. The other issue I have is road conditions. Avenue 360 is only 13 feet wide, maybe 14 in some areas, and I've shown a picture here of two vehicles passing on that road on a bridge, which is washed out several times, and it's, you have to get off on the shoulder for two vehicles to pass. The EIR states there's very little ag activity. Well, I disagree. There is lots of ag activity. There's harvest time. There's many cattle that live in the area. They're up and down that road, and they're using big vehicles. Yes.
Look, I know there's a lot of cattle there. Is that a road, the cattle truck, big cattle trucks going?
Yes. Both trucks and trailers, and when sale time, the big, the big trucks, the semis. And also, they're taking out trees right now in the neighbor's place, olive trees, and the big semis are up and down that road two or three times daily. The pictures I've taken are relative to the road conditions. They're flooding on Avenue 360. This happens every 10 years, or maybe more often. Antelope Creek cannot handle all the water that comes down during the heavy rain, 18, 20-inch rain years. It doesn't affect the property, no. However, it affects the road, and there have been many years I didn't get to work, and there are years that the Antelope Creek Bridge on 360 has washed out. It was closed down in 2016 for several days. There's still one part of the road that is still ground-up asphalt from a washout. This last, in 2016, it's never been repaved, and it is on the frontage road adjacent to this project. So I have concerns about traffic there. There is also a tributary other than Antelope Creek that affects the area. It comes out of the old Davis Ranch, which is to the east, and it floods on the south, the southeast corner of said property also. We talked about sewage. Again, I'm worried about 40 septic tanks, and all of my wells on my property, I have three, and they're only 60 feet deep. They're what we call strata wells. They're not deep, and I'm concerned that there will be some drainage from the septic system, even though they're engineered, I understand. You know, even today, the farmers are being criticized for the contaminants they're putting in the groundwater. I see no difference in sewage getting into the groundwater also. I live just west and adjacent to the property, and down...
What's that?
A map that shows the parcels. I'm talking about where the parcel maps, vicinity map.
Where it says 43 lots on the right, that's my property right there.
Oh, right there.
100 acres right next to that.
Did your family's far left for a little?
My family homesteaded that valley in 1850, so we've owned that entire valley off and on for years. We don't any longer. Another cousin here today that owns part of it, I own part of it. I've been there for a long time. The, the two circles on the bottom of the map, the circle to the right is where the floodwater touches, and the road is washed out in that between those two circles currently, and it's only ground-up asphalt. You know, there have been many projects like this in the county, and the Board of Supervisors even admitted this some five or six years ago. There's a project in Woodlake that failed, and they were required, and they luckily were able to get water from the city. There's been several in Porterville. You know, the Yoko project's been abandoned. These things have historically, and many, many times have been, have failed because of water, and, but I thank you today for your consideration, and I hope I don't have to see you guys again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come up and speak, please? Name and address.
Bill Manzer, 35859, Road 212, Woodlake. I have some maps I'd like to hand out to the board, if I may. With the help of my description. Thank you. Thank you. On the first page on the cover map, it's outlined in yellow, there's the project site. Uh, this is an, uh, archaeological map. I am a board member of the Southern Sierra Archaeological Society, among other organizations. Uh, this map is not handed out to everyone because it shows sensitive archaeological sites, and.
Through the chair?
Pardon me?
That confidential information?
Uh, it's not widely shared information. It's not confidential.
For planning commissioners, it's an open forum.
Yes.
Under counsel, did you want to opine on this?
This is a public forum. This is a public forum, and anything that presented to the planning commission is a part of the public record.
That's fine with me. I am stating my opinion, sir.
Confidential information?
Yes, not confidential information, not widely disseminated information. It's not confidential. This is a published map.
If he gives permission to share that, it can be shared with this group, as far as I understand.
So you are aware this is public information that's gonna go in the public record?
Yes. Okay, and this shows, also shows the water course. Uh, the water course, the, the EIR is not necessarily wrong. It's, it is flawed. If you look at the map, you see there's two water courses in, on this map, and they do not cross the, exactly cross the Antelope Valley, the, uh, the site, the construction site, but they are within yards of the perimeter of the site. And as far as the roadway, roadway three sixty and Road two twenty are both dead-end roads. They go nowhere. Three sixty comes out. That's the only road in and out. Two twenty is dead-end on both ends. Now, I don't see why anybody's brought that up, but I am bringing it up. That road is just a little country, uh, uh, chuck-hole road, and it's never gonna be good for anything. Uh, going to page three, I'll jump ahead. The reason why, one of the reasons why this project was not allowed to go forward in the first place, uh, this is the Antelope Valley Redfolds subdivision TM eight oh five, and I quote, "In two thousand eleven, the board of supervisors specifically required that proposed project be returned to staff, that staff specifically analyze potential traffic and water supply impacts, and the EIR be prepared. No mention was made at the time they required additional. In addition, staff discussed road standards at the time and required off-site right-of-way acquisition, which under the subdivision map act cannot cause a failure of a final map. However, due to opposition from the project's neighbors, that, uh, quote, "The neighbors were not going to grant the owner the suggested easement, as they oppose the project, and the county would not condemn property to acquire the easements." Now, I don't see where anything's been changed. We're still not gonna, I am not gonna concede an easement. I am not selling my property, so I don't see where anything's changed in eleven years and X number of months.
Bob?
Pardon me?
What are the PIC COS? CUP cups?
Oh, on page one?
Page one.
Okay, the, the pictos are pictographs, yeah, cups are cup jewels. And also, I might mention that Road two twenty dead ends at a village called Wapachi, which is a Native American village. On the dead end of Road two twenty. It's highlighted in yellow. I have no idea. It's a village name.
Uh, you'll have to come up and state your name and address, please. You're going to, to give us some testimony here? Thank you very much.
Laura Manser, three five eight, three five eight five nine, Road two twelve, Woodlake. That map is, shows some cultural, Native American cultural sites that are within, um, close proximity to this development. Uh, the cupio, the cups means that there are bedrock mortars there. The pictographs are the Indian, um, native art that are drawn on different rocks. Um, and then there are village sites. Uh, there's a couple of village sites actually on this map that are in close proximity to this development, and that's a concern.
That explanation, that was, I couldn't figure out what that all meant.
I'm not a public speaker. I just, I moved to Woodlake to have the quiet and, and, and the country life, and I just, I just can't believe that they wanna build forty-three houses on a dead-end road with one road in and one road out, and it's just, it just boggles, it just boggles my mind. But I understand that, you know, progress is progress, but I, I am opposed to it for the following reasons. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. How many more folks would like to come up? Can I see you raise your hands? Pardon?
My name is Gary Bodine, and I'm against it, miss mainly.
Excuse me, sir.
Most people, pardon me?
Could you state your name and address, please?
Gary Bodine. I live on Avenue three, two twelve and Avenue three fifty-six, where two federal creeks meet, and they were not supposed to dump in the Antelope Creek, but they put it in there. And if you look on Lang's property on two twelve, there's a hundred-foot concrete raceway, and down a little farther on two twelve, they had to put another one where the water was originally supposed to cross. No one addresses Ant, Odlocha Creek, which is a federal creek that keeps me from, in the flood plain, no matter how I try to get out of it. So, other than that and everything, where the next press, where it's always horse ho, that's Antelope Creek, which comes out of the mountains and off of what they call maybe Lone Oak, the one where the W was. That has nothing to do with Antelope Creek. So therefore, that all has to be built up or contained more to where it quits flooding at other places. That's my request.
Gary, do you think that the, uh, building of these lots and homes will increase the flooding down below where you live?
Well, no, no. They, this is where they're contesting the road when it turns north and everything. It floods there, it comes through just below him. And where Cudmore's well is eleven hundred foot deep, and there's a lot of nine hundred foot hole deeps. So, this is the main concern, people, but you addressed being, keep all the sewer, complete sewer systems, and that probably would help more than anything else for the people.
Thank you very much. Are there other, any other members of the public that have, uh, comments other than what the topics have been so far? Please come up if you do. How many more folks would like to speak? Can I see us show events? One, two, three, four, four, is that it? Okay, thank you very much.
I'm a little short. Uh, my name is Bonnie Welch. I live at two one four zero four Avenue three sixty in Woodlake. Um, I border, um, it would be the northeast corner of this project. I have ten acres there. I'm built across, um, at the north end of that original twenty-acre parcel. And if you dim the lights, I could sh, show you where my property is there. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. The southeast corner. Okay. May I use your best? Come down. Right there. That's my property right there.
Southwest?
I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous. All right, thank you. Um, and you can actually, you're pointing to my second well that I had to drill um, after the first drought that we had previous to the time that Mr. Redfield had put in all of his olives and everything. Um, okay, so you can put the lights back up. There are some concerns that I have. Um, my former husband, Everett Welch, is my neighbor, and, um, he spoke to many issues, including several years where I taught at Tulare Union High School, and there were years when I couldn't get out my driveway, and because the water was flowing over the, um, the second bridge, well, it's the first bridge off two twelve that you enter on Avenue three sixty, that was washed out. Um, incidentally, this road, Avenue three sixty, is not a, uh, it's not county-maintained, never has been. Once in a while, somebody will come in and patch a few places, but it's never been maintained. I also question, um, if it's, uh, however you, uh, would take property to widen the road, because the road, three sixty, is very, very narrow. All right, some other concerns. I have probably spent over twenty-five thousand dollars in the last ten years trying to save my second well, which has gone dry. And, uh, the first well went dry years ago after the house was built, and that's after, uh, the olives that had been planted by Mr. Redfield started to, uh, mature. So I drilled a second well, and now I've had to put in a two thousand five hundred gallon storage tank, a pressurizer, booster pump. So, lack of water is a real issue in that valley. Uh, when Everett and I were previously married, I can remember we would, in the end of the summer, we would pull, we didn't have misters in those days. It was sprinklers, and you'd drag them around, and would, by the end of the summer, um, his, his mother, who's passed away, she, uh, she was out of water. And so you just have to hope for the rains to come early. Water is a major problem in this area. I don't care. You can find water by drilling deeper and deeper, but you can't say that you can sustain that water, especially for, um, new participants in using it. Uh, there's other concerns that have not been touched on and not even mentioned. If we're gonna have, uh, I think it's now forty-three new home sites up there, they're gonna have to have waste management. Right now, for dumpsters, waste management comes up Avenue three sixty, uh, one time a week. For, um, recycling, they come up once every two weeks. That's a different truck. The dumpster trucks are very large. And then for, um, homes that don't use a dumpster, that have, uh, green, um, waste and regular garbage waste, it comes up twice a week. So now it's going to be going up even more often. I am concerned about sewage contamination. Uh, I would like to know how we can protect ourselves from this sewage contamination if he does not put in uh, a sewage system that I guess he would have to treat and everything, because there are no sewage lines out there. Um, the city has already said they would not bail out like they did, um, uh, the community north of, uh, of Woodlake. Or east of Woodlake that was built. They not only had to go in and supply waters because of the well, but they also had to put in a sewage line, and they've already said they're not doing it for this. A school bus has never gone up that road, Avenue three sixty. It has never picked up children on that road. Our kids, when they were growing up, would have to ride their bicycles down to my mother-in-law's house and, um, take the school bus there. So we're talking about a school bus, because surely with this many uh, home dwellings going in, there would be children. And so, uh, it's gotta be made safe, that road, for that. Another issue, how many, I mean, we all have probably two cars. Most of us have two cars. And everybody that's here, I'm sure, has, that lives on this road, has two cars. Well, now we're gonna talk about probably these dwellings having at least one car, if not two cars, and if they have teenagers, they might have their own car. So we're gonna have all of that traffic. We're gonna have traffic on three sixty, not only for him to build these homes, trucks, furnishings, uh, well drill, well, he's been drilling his own wells, uh, all that kind of thing, but then to maintain those homes, cleaning services, gardeners, you know. We're talking about a lot more traffic in a very small area, and there is only one way out. I think I've, um, we do have a sheriff living on the road now on, on, uh, Avenue three sixty. He is my neighbor, so I noticed that the time is now down to five minutes that a sheriff could respond. Uh, in the old days, we would call the sheriff, and it might take thirty minutes to an hour, where they might say, "We can't make it. We'll make it when we can." Now, the sheriff that we have, um, he works, and he's not always there. So five minutes is not anything we could plan on. Uh, fire department? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I'm curious if most new houses nowadays for fire protection, you either have to have a swimming pool, which can be pumped out of, or you have to have a storage tank. And so that's a question I have. Will these homes have their own individual storage tanks, or will they not need to because a fire could be fought? And if they're gonna be built close together, we know sparks, they can jump. I don't care if you have a composite roof or not. So that's another issue I, I have. All right, thank you for letting me address you. I hope I don't have to address you again. Anyway.
Thank you very much.
But it's been nice. Thank you for listening.
Have any, have any comments about, uh, I picked up on a few things, um.
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanted to ask me a question?
Sure.
On staff?
No, we were just talking to staff. Thank you very much. Um, on the, uh, school bus service, I know the, uh, traffic was addressed in the ADT studies, right? Uh, we know what the approximate traffic is up on those roads?
Including, uh, they, the traffic engineer did not have any concerns about safety in general, so that includes large, large.
Five minutes away?
As stated by the assistant sheriff.
Okay.
The road, do we have right-of-way through there to make the road wider, if that was possible?
I was gonna respond and say these are typical county concerns throughout the county, but, uh, the good thing, like any public forum we have about our county roads, is it, it draws more attention to issues we may have out there, and so this will be addressed by the County Public Roads Department.
I had a question on the, uh, if we are gonna have a community water service, what is the fire department requiring that storage?
Well, as far as the conditions of approval, they were going to have basic fire hydrants, and so they'd either have to have a large individual well, uh, for fire suppression, or they will have to have individual, um, sorry, uh, individual storage, um, facilities, or they would have to have those, uh, individually or cumulatively, so. Either way, and, uh, we, the, uh, developers are a long way from coming in and having to build one of those tanks on this site, so when, uh, fire made some comments, but basically fire's saying you have to comply with the code, so that would be a large water tank and/or individual ones.
Uh, Aaron, there, now, there's gonna be a community water service, so they won't have individual wells.
Well, I mean, it just depends, uh, fire, fire suppression's a little bit different. In most cases, you'd probably see from the state requiring one, one large tank for si, fire suppression, basically doubling the, the, um, and that was all. and that was all accounted for in the water study, but that would in the gallons per day, but that's part of the analysis. But yes, that would all have to be included in that community water system application to the state.
For the chair, yeah, the requirements from the fire code require the sprinklered and a certain amount of fire flow. So in a community system, it would have to be provided, whether that's a large storage tank, one tank for the system, or however that works out, they have to meet all those fire standards.
Plus, they have to get through the state, because you have to have a public report.
It's managed through the state, yes.
It's not going to be easy to get this through unless they can prove water, how they expose this. I don't know if there's any common area. Is the water system considered as a common area? Probably not.
It would be its own community system, so it would be much like any of the other ones that we've done in areas, so.
Well, and I think a lot of the questions that have been raised so far can be answered with the the projects address those over time, as far as the flooding in the street right out in front of Avenue 360. This project's improvement plans will fix that problem. Again, we don't look at the impacts of the surroundings to the people who are going to live there in the future. And what we've alluded to here was a lot of maintenance that could be done by the county to improve the situation out there. But again, as it sits today, our VRPA technologies do not find any real drastic safety concerns from larger traffic, such as solid waste vehicles, such as a school bus, and such as any emergency vehicle. So the road itself, yeah, people might have to make way for other cars to pass by. That's a lot of our rural existence in the county. We can only require the developer to fix what they need to fix as far as a nexus, and that's right out in front of their driveway, their accessway to the project. A lot of things have changed. We have a 2012 general plan that updated the FGMP that made the road standards suggestive instead of mandatory for that area. But we are still requiring 28-foot travelway outside of the project, and we are requiring that those road standards on the interior street meet our standards before it's dedicated to us. As far as, there is a water study, there's a sustainable supply of water, and under SEQA, we look at the baseline. What is he using today, and is this project going to be less? Yes, it's going to be less. There was a question about pastures. Are they going to be allowed to pasture the land? And I would think that pasture land uses less water if it's not irrigated pasture, but if it is irrigated pasture, it would probably use less than trees. But nonetheless, that would be less than baseline, because the homes themselves will use less water. As far as septic lamp, we presented lamp to this board, we presented lamp to the Board of Supervisors. You've seen how draconian lamp is. The fact that he went to two and a half acres meets the state standards without us imposing any requirements for engineered systems, but we still regardless impose engineered systems in this county. So the irrigation water will blend pretty much on its own, but we still have engineered systems. Again, the developers are going to have to look at the cost of those systems versus doing a community septic system, and I don't know if he doesn't choose to do a community septic system.
Is that appropriate to have that analysis in the EIR?
The EIR itself, again, baseline standards, is lamp adequate on its own, on its face? Yes. Is it going to, and that's our standards right now. The FGMP also requires engineered systems. So by right, by practice, by our general plan, EIR covers that topic. As far as the proximity to septic, again, those setbacks are hard setbacks under lamp. I mean, they're much bigger setbacks than they were previously. So at two and a half acres, you're going to have plenty of replacement leach line area, they're going to have plenty of room to set back the wells from any water sources, and that's all described in lamp, as you've seen before. So as far as, there was a cultural study done on this project. Those waterways are more than yards away. If that is a concern from an aesthetic perspective, the siding of the house and everything else, the CC and ours will have control over that. But overall, as far as this project, from everything that we've seen in our analysis, will not impact those waterways. Unless there's a severe flood condition, and it's all flooding out there anyway. So I think this project addresses many, many of these concerns, if people did read the full studies, and FGMP standards and PDFM standards are a lot tougher regiment than our regular residential standards. So I mean, there's a lot here that covers pretty much all of these concerns. Did you have anything to add, Hector?
No, just, we feel we've met the SEQA test. We have, and wonderful comments from everybody. I would really like to thank the residents nearby for being so gracious and riding so well. And a lot of the stuff, we feel, has been addressed. So again, thank you, kudos to your letters, because that led us then do a more thorough SEQA analysis, and then if a condition of approval needed to be inserted into it, it would be. But we feel that, based on existing standards, existing orders, general plan, policies, muello, lamp, Regional Water Quality Control Board, and then go on to, you know, the cultural studies. Native American tribes didn't say anything, we consulted with them, and they're aware of the whole process. They're not concerned, because on-site, nothing is evident in the surface. Subsurface discovery, yes, something will be done. Biologically, biological studies show that, you know, there is nothing out there, but as an abundance precaution, we added more mitigation that that caliphish and wildlife, the experts, you know, provided evidence to. So overall, we feel we have met the SEQA test above and beyond. The city's comments, pretty good. Some of it is now within their purview or their jurisdiction, that's okay. You know, and as Bonnie Welch pointed out, that, you know, the city has made it clear they do not want to provide service there. Well, yeah, they're not asking for it. They want to do a self-sustained community water system, they're going to do engineered septic, those type of things. So there's, the roads actually do have a 40-foot right-of-way. It's 40-foot. It's only developed in some instances 13 to 16 feet. They're rural roads. You know, the amount of traffic that's going to be generated is an expert's best calculation based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers, which will say, "Your house will do about this." Well, I'm going to tell everybody here, I don't know the demographic of what's going to go out there. Are there going to be retirees? Are there going to be new families? We don't know yet. So that traffic generation could very well be two a day for one person, an empty nester, like myself, on Tuesday. You know, I leave for work, I come home to work, that's it, I'm done. Could be 12, could be 14, because of high school-age kids or whomever. We don't know that, so it's a best guess. Caltrans had no concerns of any impacts to their roads. So, you know, we, it is, we don't know what's exactly going to go out there until it actually develops. So Mr. Bach was very correct in saying a baseline has been established. Some of the facts brought up by folks are not relevant to the project. You know, flooding occurs from Antelope Valley, I mean, Antelope Creek. That project doesn't touch Antelope Creek, it doesn't contribute to the runoff. We already mentioned that the runoff is going to be retained on-site. You know, so those kind of things are going to happen. The other unnamed channel, I didn't catch the name of it, it's not on his property. It's very close. It's very close, you know, it's maybe 75 feet, whatever, it is close, but the project doesn't impact it. So there's, a lot of stuff was raised by the citizens, which we appreciate very much, but we feel a lot of them have been addressed in the EIR, through conditions of approval, other existing standards. So that's my pitch, as far as I believe SEQA has been satisfied.
I have a question. Hector, you say there's a 40-foot easement for the road already established, is that right?
Yes, it's about, usually goes from centerline.
Okay. And then, of course, we can't, other than what's in front of his property, we can't have the developer
Correct, that's what Mr. Bach alluded to when he mentioned nexus.
So is the county making a commitment or something to improve that road?
That I do not know. That's a public works-related issue, and I don't know what funding would be available to do that. I don't know if they have a road count demand, you know, it's a thousand cars a day. I don't know if it's a safety standard. I can't speak to that, the public works department.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but I saw photos right there, that's common sense, and that's
I don't, we don't disagree with you. We don't disagree that it's a very narrow road, but many county rural areas have those narrow roads. Fresno County has the same thing, you know, there, I do have to pull over from the side. I take the back way. You know, I live in Fresno, but I go through I pull out of the way, here comes a big old truck, it's not even, not even an ag truck, it's just a big duly truck, just a huge truck. We're kind to each other, we're courteous, we pull over whomever, you know, pulls over first. I usually do, because he's bigger than me. But yes, the road conditions are not urban standard. They're not wide enough to accommodate two big trucks I've shown in the photo, you know, in a very narrow and challenging fit to have two cars do that at the same time, too. But we're asking that common sense prevail, and it sounds like it has. You know, these are good folks out there who do pull over for each other, that's common courtesy, that's common safety. You know, I can't control how other people drive, I can pick on teenagers to turn blue in the face. I've had a few boys. You know, so it's really a lot of people's shared responsibility on safe driving.
Just through the chair, just a comment on road maintenance. The county has 3,000 miles of maintained road, and it's a challenge to keep everything up. It's strained resources. However, we put priorities on areas that have vehicles and needs and honestly, people that complain a lot about a specific thing, get the squeaky wheel gets the oil or the grease. This would certainly put that road higher on priority if this is to develop out, and there would be more of an emphasis in maintaining that road. I can be confident on that.
Okay, we're still in the public testimony mode, if you didn't remember. And so I'm calling the public up again, if there are any, if this is different in subject from what we've been discussing.
My name is Kyle Davis. My address is 21887 Avenue 360. My property is what is defined as the frontage to the proposal. It is on the southeast corner. So other than the obvious, the water, the sewer, the commitment to the frontage comes out of the proposal. So what does that mean to me? Being a property owner across? So am I going to lose property? There's a set of working corrals there, and it's just, hasn't been defined. The county may or may not make a verbal commitment on improving the rest of the road. I drive that road two times a day for work, three or four times after that, getting my kids to and from school and functions. And it does not take an in-engineer to say that road's adequate. But it's just far from the truth. The southwest corner of that proposal is in a dip. So if traffic going east, you're, the approach, you're coming up a rise. So if anybody coming on and off to that road, you cannot see them until you're within 20 yards. I mean, that is not even today's current standard. And you're telling me that would not change? I mean, that's just absurd. So other than you know, the water, you're saying it's a community service or a community ran. So is this going to be established as a mutual water company? Is there going to be dues paid to this? So when they run out of water, you know, their annual dues would probably cover another well being drilled, but what about everybody else that's lived there forever? You know, Everett pointed out that the Davis family homesteaded that area, and historically, this valley has always struggled with water. Always. And with today's technology of drilling further, it's an option for a mutual water company, but not for us. So historically, you know, you can pay every suit in the book to tell you what you want to hear, but historically, the water has always been an issue. So other than me being in part of the frontage road, if you look at the, if you didn't light, look at that unshaded area, that's still privately held, that is not part of the proposal. There is a drainage that goes through that property that drains out of Redfield. So when he over-irrigates, right now, that water flows through that culvert into the neighbors. So I don't know how you could say that the fall of the gradient on this property is insufficient for any potential hazards down the road. So if that unshaded area is not within his frontage requirements to improve, that right there is by far one of the worst parts of that whole road. The county did come in after numerous calls, because that culvert pipe had collapsed, and it was just a big old dip. So with patience, I had the county come out and dig it up, and it was grateful, great. But they increased the culvert diameter, so they altered the height of the road, so the approach to those two neighbors right there, they've gained there's probably an 18-inch transition into their current driveway. But in my eyes, that that area is left out of the requirements of the proposal, because it's not in his frontage. So there's, I have to drive that road all the time. I got a young family. I just, I just I want to see what is going to happen in writing before you guys, you know, you can make a verbal commitment on the road. The shoulder of the road, there is only a handful of areas that you plan ahead, and you see an oncoming vehicle, you pull over. And anybody that currently drives that road, they know if you're going east or west, where you can stop. But overall, the shoulder on that road is not adequate to pull over for a small vehicle. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Are there any other folks who would like to come up? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Jason Waters, City of Woodlake, Community Development Director, 350 North Valencia, Woodlake, California. So as mentioned, I won't go through all of our comments. We've been submitting comments throughout the process, and I've probably already bored you to death with the comments that were written. But do want to just state a few things, I won't take much time. You know, the city has shown concern with the project and the scope of the EIR itself in evaluating the potential impacts of the project. We outlined those concerns in there, the county has given responses. Some things that we still feel haven't been addressed, the primary one is related to water, as mentioned. And the reason, you know, I know this is outside the city's jurisdiction, but, you know, the city has in the past provided water and sewer services to county residents when, you know, their water systems have failed or were no longer adequate. And so the city does have a vested interest in this, because it's just north of us, and the direction of the city's growth happens to be to the north, and within some time, we're going to be neighbors with this property. The concern that we have is first, the water consumption. So they mentioned a water report, and we put this in our comments. I hope that the commission has had the opportunity to actually read the water report. The water report estimates 500 gallons per day. That estimate, according to the report, is based on a landscaped area of 4,000 square feet. This is a two-and-a-half acre plus homestead, you know, each one of these. So I know the county didn't like our estimates. Our estimates, what we did, just so the commission knows, is we meter our water, and we provide water to county residents. So the city pulled that water meter data from Wolf's tract, and we just took the data that we had. So the actual water consumption data of county residents, of parcels over an acre, if we averaged those out. So the actual real data, and by the way, these are just homes. These people don't have, these people don't farm, they just use regular residential water. they just use regular residential water. The average water consumption was 1,500 gallons at these county residents. So we feel like it, the study isn't adequate, it underestimates that. I know I'm not a water engineer, but I know how to run averages in Excel tables, and I know how to pull water meter data to figure that out. So we do have actual data about what a more accurate level of consumption might be. And again, they don't farm, these people don't have orchards or anything like that.
That's 1,500 gallons per?
A.
A, for 4,000 square feet?
No, so the water study that's being referenced, it's, so the water study that was used in the report is based on the average water consumption of a California home. The average California home doesn't have two and a half to four acre lots. The study itself mentioned 4,000 square feet of irrigated space. So the estimate that was used in the EIR about water consumption of this project was based on an average home, which in most cases, is probably perfectly fine, if you're just doing a standard subdivision, makes sense, right? I'm sure in our EIRs, we use similar numbers when we assume water consumption when we're building a subdivision. I think that this doesn't fall under that category, I think, for obvious reasons. So we do show concern there. And again, the concern isn't, you know, just to make it difficult on the county, that's not our goal. It's just, at some point, during the last drought, when wells were going dry in the county, they come to the city, they come knocking on the city's door requesting service. And I know that it was mentioned that that there is no request for cities to provide water, but it typically doesn't work like that, you know. Wells Tract, I'm sure when that subdivision was built and that water system was built, there was no intent for the city to ever provide water, but sure enough, that's what happened. The other concern that we mentioned, again, I won't go through all of them, 'cause it would take forever, but the EIR itself, the water studying the EIR, doesn't mention a community water system. It doesn't analyze the impacts of the community water system, it talks about individual wells. Throughout the EIR document itself, it mentions individual wells on the property numerous times. So, you know, a community water system has been brought up, but I haven't seen what that would look like, where the wells are located, how deep are those wells, what are the conditions of those wells? Can it provide adequate service, what's the gallons per minute? You know, those are things that we would typically look for in an EIR to determine impacts. If it's just a nebulous sort of idea, it's difficult for us to respond on the impacts, we don't have a good sense. And as mentioned, the EIR itself doesn't, the water study doesn't mention a community well. It mentions individual wells on each site. So I have an idea what that impact may be, but I don't have an idea of what the impact of a community water system would be. And, you know, numerous things like that, I mean, we made lots of comments, again, I won't go through them all. The other concern we have is when comments, when we address our concerns or concerned about specific issues, the response has typically been, well, we'll make that a condition of approval. So we'll add a sentence in a resolution that says, oh, understand, we'll make this a condition of approval. The concern we have is we don't have any information in front of us to know what that looks like. So when we hear community water system, I don't know what that looks like. When we say, well, the roads are going to be improved, the EIR doesn't talk about what road improvements would be, what does that look like? Does it actually improve the conditions? So those are our concerns, we just feel that it's premature, because the mitigation measures or the proposed conditions of approval are unknown at this point. So we are concerned about that.
Does staff wanna comment on that?
Well, through the chair, as far as the water study, the question is, is there a sustainable water supply? No matter how you look at it, wells or a community system, there is sustainable water in the ground to supply water to this project. Does it matter absolutely how it gets there? That's based on industry standards. And as stated, most industry standards, looking at a subdivision, look at equivalent dwelling units, whether you call it 4,000 square feet or two and a half acres. I mean, even if you take the commenter's math and go out to 1,500 gallons per day and triple that 24 number, it's still less than the baseline of 324 acre feet. Ag consumes a lot of water. Even if we make some of these folks, or you're able to, 'cause it does say it's feasible as far as keeping the orchards out there as an aesthetic quality, you're still less than the 324 acre feet. Do we need to provide, all we need is a good faith effort, we do not need to provide perfect information. We provided a good faith effort to show, even in a worst-case scenario, using wells versus a community system, which everybody's agreed is better, it would be sufficient. So, worst-case scenario. So that addresses a lot of those concerns. I'm sure Hector and others might wanna comment on the Wells Tract itself and how that's come about, but the, I do think our conditions of approval, we did suggest to the city that even though it's a preliminary site plan requirement to show contours, which were shown on the tenant map, and/or erosion control plans for a very flat site, that we would include those in the final map to appease the city, not 'cause we really feel they're necessary, 'cause there is no preliminary site plan requirement anymore in the county. So those are not, we added conditions of approval as requested by, I wouldn't say a responsible agency, 'cause they have no jurisdiction over this project, but as a concerned local city. So we addressed as much as we could reasonably address by the city. Did you have something else to add?
Much, but I do wanna inform that, yes, the city provides water, but the water distribution system was there first, it had its own well also.
As a point of clarification, is that for Wells Tract?
For the Wells Tract. And, but then, the Wells Tract citizen repays its bill, and then the county pays whatever the city bills us. So it's, we pay for it. Same thing with the sewer system, you know, the sewer system consolidated, same system, went aligned to the city sewer, connected to them, put in a lift station, county paid for all of that, county pays for it. And it's a shared facility that goes to the city, so there's not a financial burden to the city of, they send us a bill, we pay it. That's it, you know, so can't speak much more to the water, the sewer. Standalone septic systems engineered, meet all state standards and county standards. Individual or community system, doesn't matter, as Mr. Bach alluded, plenty of water. And the city provided a figure of about 23 million gallons per year, while the yield from the, that could happen for the irrigation of the orchards, 119 million gallons. So even if our engineers said about 7 million gallons, they'd say 23 million. Right now, Mr. Redfield has approximately 119 million, so the question of supply has been answered. How the water is sucked out, community system or individual wells, really doesn't matter.
And the city's concern isn't so much how much water is available underground, it's, you know, in Woodlake, we have wells, right? In theory, we're sitting on, I don't know how many hundreds of millions of gallons. So our question was, if it is a community water system, what are the capacity of those wells, right?
It'll be engineered as Mr. Bach.
And approved by the State Water Resources Control Board, who is very draconian these days on community.
Without that information, it's hard for the city to, you know, when we discuss impacts of water, if I don't, if the city doesn't know what the condition of the wells are, or how many gallons per minute those wells pump, it's difficult for us to comment.
I have a question.
The well logs were also in the water study.
I had a question for Jason.
Yeah.
And Jason, you used to be with Tulare County, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I worked on the general plan, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
So I know about SEQA taking a long time.
All right, now you're with the City of Woodlake.
Yeah.
I find it a bit unusual that the county prepares the EIR for the applicant, how do you feel about that?
So we typically contract it out, so we have a third party that does that. So we typically don't prepare SEQA documents for applicants, 'cause it, this is personal opinion, that there can be conflict of interest at times. But it's also common for agencies to do that, we don't choose to do it. So we usually contract out.
My next question was, is how is the county then compensated to do the EIR work? Well, I realize that, but how do they determine that? Staff time, or what's that?
It's staff time, we'll send out all technical studies, they're all done outside. The EIR is based on those technical studies, they're not us doing water studies, they're not the county doing traffic studies. Those are professional consultants that are paid to do that through the county, so.
Was it better than to have the applicant arrange for that, or the county to do that? Is that more cost-effective?
We do it either way.
We have two approaches, through the chair, if I may, Hector Garrett, Chief of Environmental Project. We have a couple approaches, you know, a lot of, I'll call them public benefit projects that the county bridge for public works, or whatever we may do, we'll do those internally. We give the applicant the option of us preparing them, or their consultant preparing them. Now, people say, well, you're cherry picking, you know, you're getting a consultant that's favorable to it, uh-uh. You know, because that final EIR has to come through my office, through our department, and through the legal council's review too. And it's one of these things where, like, we have the ability to do them, and as Mr. Washington pointed out, technical studies are typically done by those qualified consultants that are capable of answering the SEQA question. If they bring one from a different part of the state, fine, let's see them do something, air quality, for example, San Joaquin Valley APCD, okay, they did work in South Coast, or they did work in Bay Area, different creature. You're now in San Joaquin, but they're still qualified experts, they just gotta learn how the Valley Air District does it. And Live Oak Associates does the bio, VRPA has done our traffic, you know, Schmidt Associates done the engineering, those kind of things, they're qualified consultants. Now, we then assume ownership of those studies, so they better be pretty darn good. You know, now, the EIR doesn't preclude an unfavorable decision, it can very well say adverse impact. Can it be mitigated? Yes or no, here's what you do to mitigate it. You know, might it cost a lot? Yeah, it might cost a lot, you know, but you gotta do it, or the project is not going to be approved. Conversely, you know, conditions of approval can also kick in. There's a lot of state standards or other agency standards that are not part of SEQA, they are not part of our requirement, they're not part of the mitigation, they are design features, conditions of approval, that we don't know yet, you know, we just know, you will do this. So when they do the engineered study, it comes back to us, and we say, yeah, it's acceptable through review internally, you know, maybe an outside peer review expert, we do do that. Now, and I will make it very clear, it's pitched for us, we charge 100 bucks an hour. I don't care if it's a tech or a SEQA attorney, you know, we're 100 bucks an hour. You know, I guess I value my colleagues in the private sector, let them make their profit. We're not in the business to make a profit, you know. We're in the business of transparency and integrity and well-thought-out studies. You know, we receive the good news with the bad news, and, but again, the applicant pays for it, but we have ownership of it, 'cause we are the lead agency, our decision.
And through the chair, the technical studies provide the mitigation measures, created by Christine Roper, or Live Oak Associates, or Bobby Kamanski, or any multitude of experts that we use, they provide the mitigation measures. So all we are doing is really accumulating that environmental document.
And we do have in-house expertise, just to correct Mr. Washington a little bit, for air quality and greenhouse gases, we do have that expertise in-house, so we can be a money saver to a consultant, you know, say, wow, it costs me 4,500 bucks to do this, it costs you, you know, 450 bucks for us to do it, so that's what we do.
So what is an EIR like this? I mean theoretically, you would pass the cost back to the applicant. The applicant would then build that into selling the project.
That I do know, that's a business decision under.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't see why they wouldn't, but what does this cost to do this?
It depends on the complexity of an issue, the study, he's paying for all the studies. I'm not gonna ask him, he paid for all the studies, it could very well have been 100,000 dollars, I do not know. You know, to date, you know, I know we have recharged about 800 dollars, so you're talking about 80,000 dollars. Now, if I were a consultant, how much would that be, twice that? You know, I'm not in the business to make money, you know, we're just cost recovery.
Let's move on. Yeah, we're still into the public testimony period here, I'd like to wrap this up as soon as we can. Are there any other comments of a non-same issue, anything that's different from what we've been discussing here?
Excuse me, through the chair, were you gonna allow any people who've already spoken in opposition to respond again?
If it's different.
On my behalf of this water.
Name and address, please.
To meet your category and everything.
Name and address, sir.
Well, that's on the 20 acres I had leased.
Excuse me, what is your name?
Gary Bodine, I spoke.
Address?
I didn't know I was supposed to repeat it again.
Do I have to do that because we're recorded, I'm sorry?
Thank you.
What is your address, sir?
The well that.
Sir, what is your address?
Road 212 and Avenue 356.
Thank you very much.
The water that comes to the neighbor's property, just to the south, which I had leased one part of it, comes from downtown Woodlake, with Somerton and Mulberry. I maintained the well for 20-some years, and all the lines up to it. So they're wondering where, the city has the same problem too. Their wells are 400 foot to 1,000, and they have to seal off the top 200 feet. So, I mean, now, when he tries to save 500 gallons, every tree needs 50 gallons a day, plus evaporation. So if you irrigate every seven days, you have to have 50 times seven, times 20% down, 10 up and 10 down. So, I mean, they haven't even come close to meeting the water standards.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much for your comments.
And through the chair, the CCR requirement for the trees, so if it's found to not be feasible, 'cause that water is all gonna be community domestic water, then those trees might not be there, but Moelo still kicks in too.
Yes, ma'am, Bonnie, do you have something? Very quickly, and what is your address, sir, ma'am?
Bonnie Welch, 21404 Avenue 360. I have a question that I meant to bring up before, water quality. The water that Mr. Redfield is drawing from is very deep water, and I'm curious to know, we know that that water is very hard on well structures, pipes, et cetera. And will that water be treated with chlorine or whatever by this water district that's gonna be set up? And secondly, will that gradually leach towards our property, like sewage could also, if it's not contained? And could it damage our pipes in our wells? Because anybody that has a well knows that the deeper you go, the water quality gets worse. It's not, it's not surface water that you're drawing from, which is very clean and pure. It's, so that's a concern, it's just water quality. How will it be treated, and will it affect the rest of it?
Thank you, thank you.
Through the chair, yes, it will be treated, to a domestic water quality standard, under the state requirements, through the State Water Resources Control Board.
Public water system is very, it's more strict to the people who live there.
And it's treated, and it's treated. Are there any other comments? Yes, sir, you are the attorney for?
For Mr. Redfield.
Mr. Redfield, please state your name and address.
My name is Joseph Boyd, my address is 275 South Madera Avenue, Suite 100 in Kerman, California. I want to, as I stated before, I am the attorney for Mr. Redfield. I've worked with Mr. Redfield on this project for about eight years now, since he first came in. And first of all, I want to express our appreciation to all the comments from the neighbors. We appreciate their concerns, and appreciate their insight as to what needs to go on. I also want to express our appreciation to Mr. Brock and Mr. Garrett, and the rest of the staff who have prepared the EIR and have, I think have more than adequately addressed all of the expert concerns on there. The EIR was done extremely well and professionally. Well, what I do want to address right now is the fact that Mr. Redfield, when he did purchase this property, it was zoned PDFM, and that does allow him to develop a subdivision of this nature. And it has always been his intention to develop this, so that he can provide a beautiful living area in the beautiful Antelope Valley to other people also, where these people have come to enjoy the area. And it is allowed for him to do that, the zoning does allow for him to do that. Mr. Redfield has always been adamant, and I can represent as his attorney, that he has always been adamant that he will comply with any and all requirements imposed on him by by the county. He wants to do this project right. He wants to make sure that the people that move there are taken care of, that they will have adequate water, that they will have adequate traffic. He, he wants to make sure that, that it is a great community to live in. And he has been working for long, well, like I said, I've been working with him for eight years and he's been working longer than that on this to make sure that it is a great community. All we can ask at this time in regards to these concerns is that, that an analysis be done on the issues of water traffic, it just has been requested. And that analysis has been provided by qualified third-party neutral experts who have come in and provided their opinions that, that this will be a feasible and, and allowable community. And so I, I think it should be taken into account that Mr. Redfield is working with the county. He's not fighting anybody on this. He's trying to do this right and he's doing it according to what the zoning and the laws allow him to do. And I thank you all and everybody for their time today.
Thank you very much. If there are no other comments, I'm going to close the public testimony, this portion of the, of the hearing. Just very quickly, a couple of things, those were excellent public comments. Everything was very focused, relevant, so we thank the public for those comments. I have to say that we're very highly confident in staff. And some of you may or may not know, but this organization, the Resource Management Agency has won recent awards for their planning excellence. They don't take anything too lightly, including EIRs and planning, projections of the future. All of that has been done and we've never had a bad plan come at us in many years here. So I'm not trying to defend anybody, I'm just saying that we're highly confident in their abilities and their presentation of material. So with that being said, are there any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, I've got one or two here. I'm still not happy with the individual septic systems. They've got a community water system, why can't they have a community sewer system? And at least treat that a little bit enough to, maybe they put that on the effluent on the, on the landscape and the trees are trying to keep going on there, but, but I.
Through the chair, did the applicant want to respond to that comment? Oh, you got to come up.
Like me to reopen?
Open the public here.
Public testimony?
Through the chair, please open the public testimony.
It is open.
Yes, again, Ron Redfield, two one six oh six Avenue three sixty, Woodlake. In regards to the engineered septic tanks, this is what we discussed back in six and seven. And it was okay then with the commission. And at that time, we had more lots and smaller lots than what we have now on the table. And we feel that the engineered septic tanks is adequate. So if there's a, if there's a change now, that's, that's news to us.
I think, I don't know about Mr. Redfield, I know the last time I was here, there's always been a concern of mine. And I think it was a part of the reason it didn't go forward.
No, originally, sir.
Surprise to you.
No, no, originally, it was just septic tanks. And then it was required that we do perk tests, soil tests, what have you for the engineered septics. And that's what was done.
Cam, what you're saying here and.
But you have seven different, six different opinions today up here, so I don't necessarily agree with you.
Well. I'm kind of, I, I want to kind of piggyback on what Ed said. I remember making the motion for denial and the number one reason was that I thought we needed to consider a community recycling and wastewater treatment system. If we're doing a community water system, why not? I don't see the analysis of that in here or the feasibility of it. And it also says on page thirty-nine, it is highly unlikely that septic systems would contaminate adjacent properties. I don't know how we know that. That statement to me, in all this, there's a lot of good work in here and I'm not objecting with that. But with that statement in there and no analysis of a community system, I can't support the EIR and I cannot support the project.
Well, through, through the chair, LAMP, as brought before this commission, was to alleviate that concern. And that was brought forward by the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the State Water Resources Control Board. So that does make it unlikely. And as stated, he went to the maximum of two point five acres under the LAMP, original LAMP proposal. And now we're in the county are down to one acre. So that in and of itself shows a good faith. To the commissioner's point, a feasibility study could be conducted through to the final map to see which one is more feasible, whether it's a LAMP system, which could be upwards of thirty, forty thousand dollars a tank, or a community system. Recycling's not a requirement of this county nor by the state, so that would be a little bit outside of our ability to provide nexus to require. But if it is the commission's desire, a, a study could be conducted at, before the final map. And if found feasible by the proponent and by the public works department through the final map process, they could go that route. But it's just, LAMP, LAMP does cover those, those concerns.
Well, Mr. Brock, yes, they do. And that's why the, years ago, it was just a septic system, you just dug a hole and did it. And then LAMP decided, you know, that wasn't good planning. Now, we're up to, what, an acre? Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure particularly in this location because there's not a real deep topsoil out there. That, the, and, and the wells are all shallow out through there. And the gradient, it doesn't have the benefit of having a hundred feet or more of soil to perk all the way through to clear. It's going to go down to the rock and then it's going to, going to edge its way down towards the bottom of the ravine down there and concentrate down there. And I don't know if an acre is enough. I don't know if two and a half acres is enough. I don't think, I think we're going to find that, you know what, that wasn't very good planning.
Through, through the chair, the, the state, the state has said two and a half acres is enough, but.
Through the chair, as far as the, the LAMP goes, two and a half acres is the minimum statewide. Going through this process, there'll be, there'll be studies as far as soil samples onsite. There's this onsite evaluation for everyone now. As, as Mr. Brock alluded to, that it might cost upward of thirty thousand apiece and it might be feasible, more feasible to do a, a community, but the, the requirements are there. And then there might, if, depending on what those soil samples are, because they do an individual site for each and every septic install now, they potentially have pre-treatment requirements, they potentially have other things. It's all through the state requirements. So this, the LAMP is meeting state requirements for, for the septic. And, and whatever those requirements will be as they go through that per site analysis, they'll have to, they'll have to meet.
So we're going to have monitoring wells there to, to verify it?
We are going to do everything that the state requires. And there is, there is reporting back, there's a five-year, LAMP is a very involved, detailed program. There's ongoing annual reports now for, for septic systems. And there's going to be five-year, or five-year updates to, to do that with studies and associate studies. So yes, there's, it's much more detailed than like you said, digging a hole and just doing it.
And through the chairs, the expert, water expert provided some drilling logs and the depth of the groundwater varies. It's going to be different. They hit first water at fifty-eight feet in one well, they hit first water at two hundred and twenty some feet at another well. So it's going to change. And that's why when you do the individual engineering and evaluation for each parcel, you know, I would, we don't know what's going to happen. And that's when it's finally said and done, a feasibility study will say, you know, it really is cheaper for everybody to do the community water system or and/or the community wastewater treatment system. We don't know, you know, that's our bottom line. And, but we will have to comply with the state standards, the LAMP standard there that's out there. It's different than from ten years ago. This standard is, is pretty current, two, three years at best. And so if you're talking, well, ten years ago, no, 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 things have changed. You know, monitoring might, might be required, reporting might be required, whatever the state tells us to do, it's what they're going to have to do.
And looking down the road in the future, now, right now, Woodlake isn't interested in, in providing the sewer system on the deal, but they did, there was testimony indicating that they are moving north in that direction and they're going to be neighbors soon. So maybe, maybe that'll change. But with a community treatment system here, it's going to make it very convenient to hook into Woodlake at that time and then completely properly treat that thing, that water as it goes downstream. If it just goes into the ground, you know, the ground has to clean it up and I'm not, I'm not confident.
And that's, you know, that's a good point. As, as Woodlake is anticipating moving forward, right now, it's not within their, their urban area boundary. They have to go through LAFCO, you know, so they're going to have to go through certain things, say, we're moving our line here, they're moving our line here. We're going to have an opportunity to say whatever we're going to say. If, if, if this community ends up asking to hook up to the system, just like Wells Tracked, you know, they're going to pay their way too. So it's a consolidation of, of technologies and resources and a system. So that is, is a good speculation. The city desires to go that way, will they? We don't know, we don't know. And this is a project where, where the project will be there first and the city's going to the project, the project's not going to the city.
All right, I'm going to close the public testimony again. And if my fellow commissioners have any proposals to add conditions to what we're going to vote on here? Otherwise, I'm going to call for a vote.
Well.
And a motion and a vote.
Would be to require a community water treatment.
I'm sorry.
Community sewer treatment for water.
Want to add that in? All right, all right.
Through the chair, it is a recommendation to the board.
Is it, my fellow commissioners agree with that?
Is that a?
Are you making a formal add-in?
Motion with that add-in?
To approve it with that.
I don't want to be the one to make the motion to approve.
Well, I need the verbiage so I can add it in.
That the community water treatment system be required.
Community water treatment system.
I'll make that motion if Ed won't. I'm not sure how to word that, but.
All right, well, let's have, let's have a vote on the first recommendation, please, and then you can add in if you'd like. So the first recommendation is that the Board of Supervisors certify the final environmental impact report and adopt the mitigation, mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for TSM eight oh five PSR. So do I have a motion with condition?
I make a motion that we recommend that the Board of Supervisors certify the final environmental impact report and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for TSM eight oh five dash PSR with conditions that will be on the final site plan. Can I do that? Does that make sense?
But what is the condition?
Well, and the condition will be, but I don't want it on the, can I make that motion?
Through, through the chair, that motion may be better for the second motion, not for the final EIR.
Yeah, not for the map.
Yes, so I can just say.
We can just leave that the way it is.
Okay, then I make that motion that we recommend the Board of Supervisors certify the final EIR.
Is there a second to that motion? Anyone second to that motion? This is just, this is a certifying the final report, the impact report. No second? So that motion is tabled.
That motion doesn't carry.
Ed, I thought some of Mr. Waters' testimony about the adequacy of the EIR was compelling.
So do we need to go to the second?
Water studies.
Well, through the chair, does the commission want to address those concerns before you make another motion?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think, what did I say? I don't think the, the water study is, was complete and.
So maybe I could make a red, make a motion to deny. Recommend to the Board of Supervisors that we deny the certification of the final ER, EIR and not adopt, I guess, not adopt the mitigating monitoring, monitoring.
Monitoring.
Thank you very much, a reporting program prepared for TSM eight oh five dash PSR.
I second.
Can I have a vote?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch? Patiglana?
I'm in a bad spot. No.
Birdmail document is not.
The vote is nay.
The second motion?
I can get another motion. We recommend the Board of Supervisors approve the subdivision map and final site plan number TSM eight oh five slash PSR.
Do that?
Well, how can you do that when you don't have an EIR?
That's why, that's, that's why I'm wondering, why, why are we going forward here?
I'm okay with the map, I just still like the other part.
Through the chair, we, we cannot approve the tentative map without having an approved environmental document. So my question to this planning commission, because it does seem to want to approve the tentative map, does it want to reconsider the environmental impact report document if it is not found to be solid on some grounds, that we address those as a recommendation to the board?
Chair will also consider, Hector Garrett, Chief of Environmental Planner, I've known Jason for many years, he's very good at what he does. But with respect to Mr. Diaz, I don't understand the compelling evidence, whereas ours was provided, you know, through expert testimony and expert studies. If it's one concern, if it's just the water concern regarding the water quality or water supply, that does not invalidate the, the thoroughness and the accuracy and the completeness of the EIR.
Understand, but my, I heard testimony that they were talking about individual wells throughout the.
That was, yeah, but through the chair.
And there was nothing about a community.
Through, through the chair again, it's looking at the availability of water to the project, whether it comes through wells or a community well, there's enough water under the ground to support this project. There's no, the, the need to see how it gets to those individual houses. The water's there, whether it comes through individual wells or community wells. You'd be okay, basically according to this environmental document, approving wells, individual wells. Community system is obviously better as regulated by the State Water Resources Control Board. That's another level that doesn't need to be studied in the SEQA document. It's a water sustainability report and the question according to the SEQA checklist item is not whether it's a community well or whether it's a well itself. The question is, is this going to impact groundwater further? The answer is no, no, because there's.
I don't know how we know that.
We know that from the study that this project's baseline, we look at baseline under SEQA. SEQA's baseline here is saying ag, three hundred and sixty acre feet a year.
We don't even know when it's going to rain next. I mean, are we in climate change or what? We're acting like we're going by the old stuff.
And under, under SEQA, we look at averages for baselines, we don't look at year, in any given year. But the point is that, again. But the point is that, again, staff feels the environmental document is sufficient and that there is sufficient expert testimony versus speculation by non-experts. So that's, that's, that's just staff's position.
Counsel, counsel.
Starting the LAMP, you know, that is a state-designed and state-approved process wherein, I'm sure they did plenty of environmental studies to say, you know what, you oppose the standards on someplace, whether it's area, depth, whatever technology they use, the state was confident enough to say, you do this, you're okay. And I'll use my, the air quality expertise too, where they say, if you have a project that's under 50 units, you're gonna be fine. You're not cumulative, going to impact the air, the air. These are 43 units, Air District has a threshold of 550. Same thing, studies done for traffic, the Air District is saying 1,500 cars, 100. You know, so all of these things have been tested earlier in a different agency that has trickled down a standard, a rule, a law, a requirement. So, you know, to me, following the LAMP satisfies SEQA, following the LAMP that the state has imposed on us, or the Air District has imposed on us, rules and regulations, anything else that may be done, that satisfies SEQA. No further study is needed there. They've already done the study, that it's not reflected in the EIR, is irrelevant because we're saying you will do as a mitigation measure, the LAMP. Now, I could have inserted the whole LAMP, everything in here, you know, as even more evidence, but that wasn't necessary because it would be too cumbersome. You know, so I, I disagree with the city. I feel it's been adequately addressed per SEQA standards and requirements. I don't speculate, you know, y'all know that. You know, so if it's, if it's, how do we know? We know partly because of state, partly because of an engineer and expert, water engineer and expert provided that information. To say that system may fail, speculation.
Well, what about an, you know, I'm not saying we have to require it or whatever, but what about an addendum to this to just say what a community recycling wastewater system would do?
Wait, wait, hold on.
Well, that, that's why the, where we have this dialogue and this exchange, that's where there's an opportunity to say, we recommend that this, that they also further study that. You can do that.
I think we've misfired, frankly, and I'm gonna say this. Counsel, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We've misfired on voting on this in the way it was intended to be presented. The material in the first recommendation is whether the studies were valid and adequate to meet the criteria that was being sought. And we did. To tack on something that's a condition to a physical thing, and that is if we want an engineered or an individual system, or if we want a community system, could be under the second recommendation, which is when they approve the tentative map. We can ask for those kinds of additive things that have to do with the physical treatment of sewage or water. It has nothing to do with what Mr. Bach just said, and that is that all of the studies said we're in the parameters, we're inside the parameters. And to say, well, how do we know? That's speculation. We, is that fact or opinion? That's your opinion. The fact is, the studies were done by people who know what they're talking about and used all the guidelines that the state specifies. So I'm gonna say we have to go back and vote on this again because we misfired. We, you misunderstood what number one was. And I, I misunderstood what number one was.
I think to, I think a 10-minute break to figure out all these issues might be beneficial.
Let's have a 10-minute break, and we'll be back here at 11:45.
I, I mean, a project like that just needs to have the city of Woodlake involved.
Forty, fifty, sixty years old.
I mean, just supply the water.
Would they?
Could.
Please have your seats, we're now in session. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on here, and we're going to go back to the first recommendation. Counsel has advised that I can re-raise that recommendation as a new voteable recommendation. So the previous vote is canceled.
We have to rescind it, don't we somehow?
We don't, you told me.
The revote is.
Just revote. So may I have a motion on the first recommendation?
I just, I do want to make one comment here, and for, for the benefit of everybody here. I still have some concerns, but staff's rebuttal is compelling, and I'm not the expert, and I have to rely on staff and their experts. And if they say that it's gonna be adequate, then, then I'm gonna have to agree with them and so I could support this document. If the opposition thinks we made a mistake here, then they have an opportunity to challenge this thing, they can hire their own experts and challenge it at a later date. But at this point in time, I, I think I could, I could support the, the document.
Is that a motion?
No, no, so.
He's gonna make the motion.
I'm, I'm looking for a motion on the first recommendation.
Can you make it again?
Sure.
I recommend that the Board of Supervisors.
No, through the chair, through the chair.
Turn.
No.
No what?
In order to revote, a member of the winning side previously needs to make that motion to revote.
Okay, got it.
Anyone, Commissioner Patiglana?
Okay, so we're making, recommend that the Board of Supervisors certify the final environmental impact report and adopt the mitigated monitoring and reporting program prepared for TSM 805 slash PSR.
Second that.
Oh, true, true.
Okay, go ahead. That's makes sense.
Uh, no.
Millie?
Let me, wait a minute here.
Come on.
What am I voting on?
Recommend that the Board.
I'm voting yes. I'm voting yes on that, on that recommendation. Thank you.
Elliot?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Patiglana?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you very much. May I have a recommended, a motion on, sorry, a motion on the recommendation, a second recommendation, I'm sorry. And it can be with conditions.
And through the chair, we have on previous subdivisions, added requirements that the tentative map, or the final map, provide sewer stub-up lines for future community systems and/or city systems to be connected at a later date as a suggested condition.
Thank you very much.
What about, what about a feasibility on a community wastewater recycling system?
Through the chair, as stated before, we could make a requirement as part of the final, the final map, that they provide a feasibility report on a community system as, to include a recycling water treatment component.
May I have a motion, please?
I want to make one comment before the motion. You know, obviously, this is a wonderful place to live, and this map definitely pointed that out. When the pioneers came, the Welch's and people in other areas of Tulare County, they came to the same places. That's why you see the archaeological sites where the early homesteads were. One thing has changed that's kinda, we cannot overlook, and that's the uncertainty of water. And this is, you know, this is a good project. I just think it's a project maybe that needs to be considered when there's actually a, a hookup opportunity with the city of Woodlake. It's before its time, and I think it's in the wrong place.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve tentative subdivision map and final site plan map, TSM 805 slash PSR, with the requirement of a community water system, treatment system.
What you want is, they want a community water system and a sewage treatment system.
Community sewage.
Yeah.
It's got the community water system already, community sewage treatment.
You want it studied, you say you want it studied, or you want the system?
It's the system.
You have to make a definitive statement.
Yes, no, I want the system.
You want it studied before they do a system, or do you want it, or do you want?
No, you just want a system that meets the county standard.
Right, that's mine.
I second that.
Gong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
No.
Patiglana?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And at this time, we're going to go into a second session here, so I'm going to suspend or adjourn this session, and we will re-adjourn in five minutes.
And leave in ten.
Oh, no, they should want to close.
Yes.
It's a no-brainer.
Session of the Planning Commission is now in session.
Roll call.
May I have a roll call, please?
Gong?
Here.
Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Yes?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Patiglana?
Here.
Commissioner Aguilar did notify us he would be absent, and so did Commissioner Dwyer.
We're on number five, general information. We've read adjourned as the Joint Planning Commission, Airport Land Use Commission. No action required. Sit for a workshop consisting of a joint planning commission, Airport Land Use Commission, consisting of presentations from staff and the consultants, followed by commission discussion on the project. Comments from the public will be allowed as this is a public forum. Mr. Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Millies, commissioners. I am Aaron Bach. I am the interim Assistant RMA Director of Economic Development and Planning. So before you today is the Sequoia Gateway Project, and this is a workshop, this is not a public hearing, and so it is an open forum to ask questions as material is presented. This is for the Sequoia Gateway Project, GPA 15-001, a general plan, update amendment, specific plan, change of zone, development agreement, memorandum of understanding, master special use permits for Phase 1 and 2, and a tentative subdivision map, or I think I have that wrong, it's a parcel, commercial parcel map. But the, the point is, there's quite a few entitlements involved with this, this project. It's on the southeast corner of SR 99 Caldwell Avenue intersection, west of the city of Icelia. The project history, there was a general plan initiation in December 10th, 2013, so this project's getting a little aged here. The city of Icelia's general plan designated as reserve. The city of Icelia's zoning map zones it as X, so as a preliminary zoning measure, it's unnamed at this time. Icelia's sphere of influence was expanded by Lafco to include the site in April 2018. It's outside the city's tier-three urban development growth boundary. It's within the county-adopted urban area boundary, therefore it is subject to the county-city MOU, and the city has reviewed this project in several iterations. So the project entitlements, as stated, is a general plan amendment to highway commercial within the county development corridor. It's a change of zone to C2, but there will be smaller changes that are allowed to the C2 zone through the specific plan by ordinance. There'll be a development agreement, an MOU with the city, it'll have a master special use permits for the phases, a lotlight adjustment, and approval of a commercial tentative parcel map, as shown in this exhibit. So presentations today, there'll be a presentation from our consultant, Peck Planning, describing the project. There'll be a presentation on the EIR, presentation from ALUC by our staff planner, and a presentation from ALUC Consultants, Aerie Consultants Limited. And with that, I'll complete my portion of the presentation, and I will let Mr. Steve Peck get up here and tell you what else is going on with this project.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It's good to be here. I hope we, we can provide you with a concise summary, as Aaron requested. This is kind of the top of the waves, we're not gonna drill down into the documents that have been provided. You have a specific plan that covers infrastructure, land use, phasing. There's a very detailed EIR that will be reviewed as part of this, and also there's a detailed airport compatibility analysis that's part of the application. Part of what I wanted to cover today is kind of where it is, what it is now, the specific plan and design features. If you go back far enough, maybe 20 years, this has been a lot of different things. It was a candidate for the outlet mallet in, in and up in Tulare. It was proposed as a Jack Nicklaus golf course at one point. It was proposed as, you know, part of the expansion, and most recently with the city of Icelia's 2014 general plan update. It was considered as a regional retail site, late in the process, it was put in reserve for some phasing purposes. And so there's been lots of discussion on it. The important point for this commission is that in the 2012 county general plan, it was designated as a regional corridor site. There are a number of policies that you have about selecting a number of sites along Highway 65 and Highway 99 that would be focus sites that would serve the entire region. This was part of the entire economic development thrust of the county's general plan, and so there is a site designated at 180 and 99, there's this site at Caldwell and 99, and there's one up at Traver and Kingsburg around one of those major intersections. And these are the regional corridor sites along 99 that are referred to in your general plan. These are the policies. The important thing to remember is that second bullet, is this site's already been designated for development, although it doesn't have zoning on it or the right designation. There's a group of policies that say, these sites will develop in the following manner with the following kinds of uses that are compatible. But in order to activate that, there's a specific plan that's required for anything over 40 acres, there's a corridor plan that's required, and because of other policies, there's a master use permit. What you're gonna, what you're gonna see next month is sort of the amalgamation of all those things that meet all those requirements. As Aaron said, there's also a city-county MOU that governs the applicability of city-county general plans. Anything outside of the urban development boundary, that tier-three boundary, is county general plan policy, anything inside is deferred to the city. Nevertheless, on this project, we are meeting and exceeding the city of Icelia's engineering standards and their planning standards in many respects. This is where the site is, that Aaron says, southeast corner of 99 and Caldwell. Earlier this year, the sphere of influence was amended in April, and that had two effects. Number one is it made the project annexable to the city of Icelia sometime in the future. Our initial application said that we're perfectly okay with that, we have a consent to annex, and I have actually phased portions of this project concurrent with an annexation. The other thing that it does is it allows us to apply for an extraterritorial service agreement for city sewer. We've actually had robust discussions with the city, and we think that's a very real possibility. The EIR still covers the possibility of an onsite treatment, packaged treatment plant, but nevertheless, the, this amendment for the SOI creates an opportunity for city sewer service. This is the project that, as it's been phased, it's 126 acres, and you don't take on a project like this in one big bite. So what we have is this first phase of about 12 acres that includes a signal at the ramps on, coming off and on 299, and a signal at Sequoia Gateway Drive. The, the size of this phase was the result of much labor. We originally had this, this phase size at about 20 acres to include a couple hotels and additional restaurants. In the analysis in the environmental impact report, it would determine that this size of a project could be handled adequately with the existing improvements on Caldwell and the ramps on 99. The, the southbound ramp on the west side of 99 is kind of our critical intersection, it has some capacity issues, and with a signalization of that, that ramp, we can support this 12 acres of. acres of property. It's possible we could also add in portions of Phase Two, these two little fast food phases. It's likely that anything south of what we call Sherman Way will require the construction of the interchange at, which we believe will happen in two thousand twenty-four. Yes, sir?
You're talking about the west side of ninety-nine, where that off-ramp is?
Yes.
Four-way intersection?
Essentially, yes. Yeah, we, we would, we'd signalize that because it's deficient now.
Come over if you can't see.
Right, so we would put in a signal there, per Caltrans standards, and we would, and that would solve the capacity issue. In the longer term, there would be a combination of either a signal and a roundabout, both on the east and west sides of ninety-nine. So you're correct, Commissioner, that those improvements would be somewhat interim, but they're necessary to make, to actually resolve an existing deficiency at those areas. Right, right, so our first phase would include those three signals that you see up there, as well as a twelve acre piece of property. This, this middle piece that's highlighted is basically what we call our hospitality core, it's three hotels and two sit-down restaurants. Then we have a regional retail, regional office area, and at that point, we would actually redirect Drive eighty-five to be Sequoia Gateway Drive. This relocation is also something that's being considered as part of the interchange improvements. And then the last phase would be the, the regional retail center. We always like to say that this particular piece of property, development of this, is at least ten years out, and nobody knows what's going to happen in retail, ten years out, let alone probably five years out. So what we're thinking about at this, although we have a plan on this property, is this could be a lot of different things. It could be warehousing, it could be order fulfillment, it could be a big box that isn't in town right now that needs a regional location. The bottom line is, we don't have a specific site plan on that because we don't know who the tenants are, and this piece of property, in discussions with the city and the county, would likely be required to be annexed to the city before it develops. This would also require supplemental environmental analysis.
This were the, originally the IKEA or the Bass outlet, was that?
Yeah, if, if one were to go in here, this is where it would go.
Okay.
Also, you had a ten-year plan, is that because this over, new overpass isn't, it's not in the budget for ten years with Caltrans? I think.
That one is actually in the budget for two thousand twenty-four, so it's, it's close. The measure R money has been committed, there's actually a PSR and a PSNE that's been, being developed now, staff can speak more authoritatively to that, but that project, they're starting right away acquisition now, and they are talking about its delivery in two thousand twenty-four. So our belief is that probably anything south of Sherman Way, that east-west drive, would be entirely dependent upon that happening, there's just not enough traffic capacity out there to support those additional trips. And so certainly anything, the, the regional retail, which we think is the last piece to develop, and it'll probably be developed in pieces, would be, certainly be dependent upon that. I, I'm not sure, that's probably something staff can speak to. This is a three-D illustration that it probably better shows how the project's going to develop out, and this is the way it sits today. The kind of skew, bottom right to upper left is Caldwell Avenue, and you can see the, the, the northbound ramp, just sort of in the low right-hand corner, that flattened area on the right-hand, that's the Shell Station, and the Faria Fruit Stand is on the left-hand side. And this is what we think will happen. In the first, first phase, we'll have a couple of gas stations, we'll have Valley Children's medical offices. In the far end, those two connected boxes are sort of a massing model for Valley Children's, and then four restaurants. We think we have a sit-down restaurant, a couple of fast foods, but there, we have very strong interest for that. This would be the twelve acre portion. It's possible that in, in a phase we call two A, depending on traffic capacity, we could do a couple additional fast food restaurants. Phase two B would be three hotels and a couple sit-down restaurants. In the far area, there's a visitor center designated, staff asked us to designate a piece for a visitor center that could serve the Sequoia Tourism activities, Isalia's activities, the Farm Bureau's activities. So part of our project is to dedicate a site for that, and so we've met with a number of stakeholders to find out, so what do you want it to be? We're not going to operate a visitor center, they may want it to advertise to Highway ninety-nine users.
Our east building is the children's.
Yes. It's not a hospital, it's, it's an office building.
Oh, it's not a clinic?
It, it is a, it is an eight-to-five office building.
Is there a treatment at that facility?
Well, they would have typical medical procedures like you would at your doctor's office.
Outpatient.
But there are no inpatient, inpatients there. And, and I think this is one of the things that we got, we'd like to get away from us early on in the discussion, it is, just because it's a subsidiary of Valley Children's, it is not a hospital. It's just like the facility on Middle King and Acres, only bigger. So doctors come here in the morning, employees come here in the morning, they leave in the afternoon, they see patients, it's closed at night. A hospital access dislocation is prohibited by your Airport Land Use Commission regulations, so it wouldn't be possible even if we were to propose it. Kind of lastly, on that side of Sequoia Gateway Drive, we have regional offices, the example I use for these would be something like a farm credit west is in Tulare, somebody who wants to be on the freeway has, has a big draw. So we have fifty thousand square feet of those uses, that would be late in the process. And then finally, well into, well past the, we say it's past two thousand twenty-four because this obviously requires the interchange to be constructed. Again, we don't have specific tenants, we don't know the configuration, we simply took the balance of the property, which is about eighty acres, and converted that to square footage, so I think in the, in the EIR, it's described as up to seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of space.
Question there, could you go back to that one right there? You know, in the past, we've talked about development, the ninety-nine development corridor, and one of the things that's come up multiple times is that we would, while we could still preserve it, we would probably not want to look like we do in Fresno County.
Right.
Commercial on both sides of the deal there. Any way that, that westerly portion there, where you've got those big boxes deal, the last, that third phase there, could be pushed to the east a little, and then we have a green corridor, a park, some plantings, some separation there, just to.
So part, it's a good, good comment, because we did consider that. If you see the, the, the building in the middle, right here, that's the visitor center. What you're not seeing in that yellow area is there's a three-acre park behind it. We were very sensitive to the fact that sometimes you go to these centers, I stop in Kettleman a lot because I go back and forth to the coast, and there's just no place to sit down with my hamburger and sit in some shade in a park bench. So what's behind that visitor center is a three-acre park that would be like that.
That would hit, that would go kind of.
Yeah, that would, that would go from here, along this entire face right here, there would be a, a large park area, so this piece back here would be separated by kind of a green space with trees. We've even thought about this as maybe an area where you could even come to the visitor center if it was a destination, not buy anything and just rest. Sometimes what you need is, and so this entire area, we've, we posed to the Chamber and the Isalia Tourism Investment Committee about what do you want that to be? We know we need that just as separate, just for green space purposes, but what we're not going to have is kind of buildings wall-to-wall, so I, I understand your, your comment.
From the looks of the aerial, from the other one, on those restaurant, where the hotels are, and then those other, what's the, the south, those long white buildings right there?
Those are offices.
Offices through there. From the, looked like, from the deal, all you saw was parking lots in front of them, and it looks like, like the flurry driving by there, all you see is a bunch of parking lots in the back of these buildings, and it's really not attractive. If you're going to put that park in, I would, I was hoping to see it up against the freeway, so you're not looking off the freeway right into parking lots.
The area you're talking about is right here.
Yeah, that looks like a bunch of parking lots, and you're looking into the back of these buildings.
If you want those flipped, that's easy. So if you're, if you're talking about, in fact, the tenants of these certainly want some freeway exposure, if your idea is to put the parking in the front.
Everybody wants freeway exposure, and that's what they've got in Fresno.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't look very good.
Yeah. So I think it, it's certainly something that we're, we're open to, the, these buildings have not been programmed yet, and we're at that stage where all we're doing is erasing our lines with erasers rather than jackhammers. The sensitivity was, and yours is, is valid, is that rather than having the parking in front, so as you come down Sequoia Gateway, you don't have parking all along the front, because there is going to be parking on the other side, that those can certainly be flipped for that purpose, that's why we're discussing it now. I think in terms of what I was talking about in the, I don't see where the cursor is on this. Up in the upper right-hand, probably in the middle, there's a little notch-out area. The three, the three-acre park that I'm talking about will come down that side, and we can have detailed drawings for the, they, they exist, we just thought, with the limited time we had today, we weren't going to go into that level of site planning detail.
No, it's not so much, because ninety-nine's kind of going at an angle, and I, I don't have a problem with those up in the, the north, the northwest side, because you're not really kind of, you're, you've got to look back over your shoulder.
You're looking this way.
See anything, right? But as you're approaching down through here, if you're, you're looking right off to your right, and, and it would be nice if there was a park, trees, planting, agriculture, something that, that, that retains our, our way of life here, and, and not buildings up with chain Lake fences and big signs and billboards and, and, and stuff like that. I just, we've talked about that, I mean, that's kind of been my, my push and my beef here for the last fifteen years, and I would hope that we would.
We can.
Last thing we want to do is look like Fresno County from Kingsburg North, it's just, you can tell when you get to Tulare County, across the river, and, man, this is beautiful, we're in the farmland, and I'd hate to just see the extent of that right up into Fresno County.
I hear you. This is a, an image of the, and this is what we renamed Sequoia Gateway Drive. There are a number of other images like this in the specific plan, it gives you an idea of the detailing that we have on the, the common area. We don't have specific architecture programmed, we're not going to be kind of slaves to a kind of architectural theme because we're going to be drawing a lot of national tenants here. But we want to do a, a pretty nice job of the common area, lots of landscape setbacks. If some of you are familiar with the Plaza Business Park, that's a project that I worked on with the same team members. We have bioswales, there's trees, the signage has a lot of texture to it. So this simply indicates what the, the common area improvements would look like. The roadway has been designed with an inch of its life based on the traffic that's going to go through there in the long run. But this gives you an idea of kind of the massing that, that occurs. One of the obvious features of our project is the Valley Children's Medical Group Pediatric Specialty Clinic. Again, it's not a hospital, it is a subsidiary of the hospital, just like Isalia Medical Clinic is now a subsidiary of Coia Delta. They currently have about fourteen thousand existing patients that they serve, and unfortunately, eighty percent of them have to drive to Madera to get service because their current facilities are too small. So their current plan is to simply serve the existing patients they have here. They'd have a phased expansion to thirty thousand patients and up to sixty thousand square feet. They are half of our first phase. Part of their plan is to fill out their network all the way from Modesto down to Bakersfield. They have a, a plan of within thirty miles or thirty minutes, they'll be able to see any kid within their service area. So we sort of fit in between their Madera Fowler network and their Bakersfield network, so this middle circle, that second circle from the bottom is them. I won't go into detail of the specific plan features, but there's a project description that talks about what we're going to do, when we're going to do it, what the features look like, the special environmental features, the general plan conformity, airport compatibility, development regulations. Aaron mentioned that this is going to be adopted by ordinance, which means we're going to come up with special regulations like we did on the Hash project that apply just to this piece of property, because applying your existing zoning ordinances and development standards wouldn't be appropriate for an urban-type project like this. We've looked at circulation and traffic with, looking at complete streets, we have transit that's going to be extended to the area, bike paths, pedestrians, and then adequate street sections, utilities. We've gone through our infrastructure financing mechanism, actually, we're actually creating a special transportation impact fee for this project that addresses its impact throughout south, the southwestern portion of Isalia. And then we have special analysis, airport plan conformity analysis. These are the technical studies that we relied upon to do the project, we simply don't start writing this, we rely on, we did six iterations of a traffic study to figure out what we could build and when we could build it, a water supply assessment, water and wastewater feasibility, general plan conformity, air quality impacts, noise impacts, ag conversion and mitigation, we'll be doing an ag conservation easement on, for, for this project's impacts, and a fiscal impact study. We also don't get this far without doing a lot of talking to other people. We've met frequently, frequently with city and county staff, we've met frequently with Caltrans to address their concerns, multiple iterations of the, the analysis with the Isalia Airport Administration, the Farm Bureau, Hospitality Industry Chamber of Commerce, VDC, Tulare County EDC, Rotary Club, Kiwanis Club, Lions Club, basically anybody who would listen to us, present, make a presentation and hear their concerns, we've talked to them in the past twelve to eighteen months. Development regulations include some common sign, sign details, these are the circulation details, infrastructure financing, we have a special transportation impact fee, those colored links and the colored intersections in the graphic below show the, the improvements that we're funding either directly or through our impact fee, so you can see we have a pretty broad spread of participation, and we have been working hand-in-hand with the city of Isalia and how we implement that because there's some overlap with their impact fee program. These are the fiscal and economic impacts, twenty-two hundred jobs, million seven per year for schools. We basically go from this project, project site paying about fourteen thousand dollars a year in property taxes, to paying probably close to three or four million dollars a year property taxes. Two and a half million dollars per year in local regional transportation funding and money, and then ten million dollars in direct contributions by the project for mitigations and signals and other things. Airport compatibility is an important issue, and we covered that in a very detailed study. Yes, there's John Sanders from Aries can speak more to, more to this, but we've done a, a study, we've reviewed the operator, we've done what's called a Form seven, seventy-four sixty analysis, which is a review by FAA of all of our structures, locations, heights and so forth, and on Monday, we got full clearance from the FAA on all of those facilities. Accident history, that those are in the analysis, flight tracks and incident procedures, and then the departure paths and the, and the approach slopes and heights. This is what we received on Monday on the structures that we, that they analyzed, basically it's a full clearance, no lighting or marking is necessary. These are your plans that are key to the project, and I'll let John go into more of these, but that colored, colored rectangle or polygon is where we're located, the upper one shows that we're in zone six, the lower one shows a combination of the departure slopes for runway twelve, and the approach slope for runway thirty. We're well outside of those. The upper, the upper graphic shows how we relate to the noise counters for the airport, well outside, even the, the minimal one, and then on the bottom, there's an indication of where the accidents have occurred over the last thirty-eight years. Most of them occur on the, on the runway, either because of return trip, or, but there are a few that occurred in the runway protection zone, which is generally north of Whiten Dale. And finally, this is the, the list of uses that we have in the project, our site is indicated in yellow, and all those uses are uses that are allowed and permitted in the airport land use, comprehensive airport land use plan. So with that, I can answer any questions, or Mr. Sanders can come up and speak to other airport issues. Um, so with that, I can answer any questions or Mr. Sanders can come up and speak to, uh, other airport issues.
Yeah, through the chair. Uh, we only have till one o'clock today because they have another, uh, meeting. So, um, just to give the consultants here an idea of how fast we need to move through this. Uh, Jason, if you wanted to go next.
Steve, what was the anticipated ph- phase one, uh, through all the entitlements and the approvals and the design? What's the, what's the first phase projection in terms of starting construction?
We'd like to be under construction on the phase one on and off sites next year in twenty nineteen. Have the, uh, the actual tenants that you see up there on phase one building their buildings in late twenty nineteen and early twenty twenty. Yes. For the balance of the project, we probably have seventy-five percent of that committed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Garcia-Laboue, Tulare County Permit Center and Airport Land Use Commission Staff. It's been a while, so, uh, it's a pleasure, uh, being here today. Um, as far as, uh, the Airport Land Use Commission process, um, in our county, as you're familiar, the Airport Land Use Commission is our planning commission plus two aviation experts. And because of the type of project that this is, um, this requires the ALUC review. And so that's, uh, one of the reasons that early on this workshop was decided, um, as a kind of appropriate introduction to this. Um, as far as the Airport Land Use Commission, uh, the process is defined by the State Aeronautics Act, uh, and that's under the Public Utilities Code. And, uh, John Sanders, as Steve mentioned, uh, could probably go into a lot more detail on that. Um, as far as the types of reviews that we receive, typically that's broken into two different kinds. That's the information items and the action items. Um, as you're aware, uh, there aren't too many projects that come before this commission. Um, that's a direct result of that two thousand and twelve update to streamline the process. So, uh, Steve was showing different slides, but, um, I'll get into kind of the four areas that the ALUC looks at in a second. But, uh, some of those slides showed the land use compatibility tables as well as, uh, the safety zones and other maps. Um, and as I mentioned a second ago, the workshop was due to the size of the pro- project and the detail and the relative proximity to the airport, uh, vice, for Visalia. As far as, uh, just kind of going back, the Airport Land Use, uh, Compatibility Plan was amended in two thousand and twelve and, uh, fairly streamlined much of the process. So again, that's why you don't see too many projects come through this commission. Um, as part of that process, it incorporated those, uh, the update, uh, that was done in two thousand and eleven to the, uh, by Caltrans, uh, Division of Aeronautics to the State Airport Land Use Handbook. And much of that information had accident data and other, uh, details. Again, John and Steve could probably speak more extensively than me regarding that. But, um, that showed, uh, updated information in development of those safety zones and other areas. So, um, projects that are, uh, consistent with the plan are typically information only. So, uh, on average, we normally get a parcel map referral or a building permit or something of that nature. And we, um, look at that and see, uh, those four different areas, if it's, uh, consistent with the plan, if it's allowable use. And, uh, most of those don't even come before your commission. Uh, because of this, uh, the special, uh, the special details of this project, um, again, location and the scale of the project, that's why this has been brought before your commission. Um, and that's, uh, a, a big thank you to John who's gone through and, uh, worked in, in great length on identifying the consistencies for this specific project with the different components of the Airport Land Use Plan. So the four areas of review that we typically look at are safety. Um, that's been developed into safety zones one through six. And so each of those different categories have specific areas and allow specific land uses that are deemed consistent. An example of something that would be inconsistent is the hospital designation. And as identified, that's why, um, we're being very clear on the definitions of certain uses within this project. Uh, another area is noise. Uh, so there are actually noise contours that were developed, uh, by John and, uh, other consultants that, uh, show, uh, again, depending on proximity to the runway, um, limitations and certain mitigations, uh, in regard, in that regard. Um, that's typically closer to the airport. It is noted that this site is located, uh, a good distance from the runway. Um, height is another area of, uh, review for ALUC. And that has to go back to the, um, actual navigable airspace. Uh, and then we look at the federal aviation rules for that. And again, uh, traffic, as Steve mentioned, and, uh, the traffic pattern and which direction that, uh, flights, uh, take off and land. So, uh, just kind of to, uh, sum up that, uh, ALUC reviews, just to clarify for your commission, they are advisory in na- nature. Uh, the commission does not regulate airport operations. We do not tell, uh, airports how to run their operations at all. Um, but we, we do make recommendations for the jurisdictions. So in other words, the Airport Land Use Commission typically, um, a- as an example, we've had referrals from the City of Visalia or other jurisdictions. Um, and projects are reviewed, uh, by ALUC staff and then prepared for your commission to vote upon um, if it is found that there's any kind of question or any kind of issue with the airport land use. And so then the commission can go through a process, review that after a presentation and details are presented. And again, it's advisory in nature because we do not make the land use decision, uh, but more of a recommendation as to ways to mitigate the impact or recommendation of conditions or if there is an issue, uh, a recommendation for denial, but not actually limiting that. So, um, as part of the process, there is what we call an overrule. That's outlined by the Aeronautics Act. And that's where, uh, the ALUC can, uh, make a decision, put it forward. And then that jurisdiction that actually has the land use authority can overrule that. There has to be, uh, a majority vote on that. And, uh, that, that is specifically outlined, um, in law as well as our, uh, Airport Land Use Plan. So in this case, that would be the Airport Land Use Commission and then telling the Planning Commission. So it's just so that there's some kind of clarity on that since the commissioners have kind of a dual role, role, but separate commissions. Um, if there's any issues that, we can explain that in greater detail. Um, our county, uh, the, our Airport Land Use C- Commission is not a traditional Airport Land Use Commission because our planning commission has, uh, two aviation experts in addition to the, um, Planning Commission. So typically, the way that it's set up is there's representatives from actual cities that have airports. Um, but there is a provision under the law that allows non-traditional. And, and that's what our county chose when the Airport Land Use Commission was created. Um, I want to turn it over, uh, to, again, Aries Consultants. John has come aways from Morgan Hill and to, to kind of help and explain in much more detail than I could probably provide, uh, on this project. So I'll turn it over to him at this point.
Let me go up to the-
And then, uh-
Oops, I need you.
Go the other way.
There you go.
There you go.
Uh, good morning, uh, everyone. Uh, my name's John Sanders. I'm with Aries Consultants and we're, uh, located in, uh, Morgan Hill. It's nice to be, uh, back here, uh, talking to the ALUC again. Last time I was here was, uh, for the adoption of the twenty-twelve, uh, Comprehensive Airport Land Use Plan that, uh, Jason, uh, has mentioned. Uh, in light of what Jason has talked about and, uh, what Steve has mentioned, I'd just like to highlight some of the things that relate to the airport compatibility issues as they relate to this project. Uh, the first thing is, as was mentioned earlier, uh, the plan for Tulare County was based on the two thousand and eleven Caltrans Handbook on Airport Land Use Compatibility. An important thing to remember in developing these plans is that based on the Airport Master Plan or Airport Layout Plan for an airport. So the drawings you see in front of you here, those show an eight thousand foot runway, not the existing six thousand five hundred foot runway that currently exists, but a future extension. So what we have done in working with Steve is to look at what the impacts are uh, with regard to the eight thousand, uh, foot runway as proposed. And we've also looked at what are some of the impacts as they relate to the existing, uh, six thousand five hundred plus, uh, runway that you have now. The other thing, and I, I believe everybody has a copy of this, is the, uh, there is a conformity analysis that, uh, Steve has put, uh, together and I believe provided to you. And in, in the first part of that document, there is a lot of information on, on how the airport operates. And in particular, how it operates with respect to the area shown in red here for the proposed Sequoia Gateway project. So that information includes, uh, information on, uh, overflights, aircraft operations that could, uh, be overflying the proposed development. And these could include, uh, aircraft, uh, landing on runway thirty, aircraft doing touch and goes on runway thirty and, uh, as well as some of the departures to the southeast on, on runway twelve. And so this is all reflected in, uh, the safety zones that are shown here. So as was mentioned earlier, the proposed project is in Safety Zone Six, which is called the Traffic Pattern Zone, as I've just mentioned. So you would expect some flights over this area. Uh, time has been spent talking to the, uh, City of Visalia about the, the operations of the airport. And I think, uh, based on those, uh, it could be about fifteen percent of the operations at the airport of the different types that I've mentioned could either be flying over the project to the north of the project or just south of the project, given the fact that, uh, not every pilot will follow the same routing, uh, in and out of the, uh, airport because of the, uh, pilot, uh, because of the aircraft and the aircraft performance. So there is not one single line, as you might see with the road, where everybody is within, uh, those twelve feet. Uh, that only happens when you get into the final approach to the runway, when everybody is lined up with the runway. But in terms of flying to the west of the airport, uh, whether it be doing a touch and go, which training operation or coming in to land from the west, there is not a, a single line. And that's why you'll see on this drawing here that the airport traffic pattern area extends out six thousand feet on either side of the runway, because you have a similar pattern on the northeast side of the runway when runway twelve is the predominantly used runway. So in looking at, uh, the traffic pattern zone and how it relates to the standards that were established by Caltrans that are reflected in your, uh, twenty-twelve Comprehensive Airport Land Use Plan, I'd refer you to table three dash one, uh, in that document, which Steve has summarized in the, uh, uh, table he just showed you a few minutes, that shows all of the proposed, uh, land uses in this development are consistent, compatible and conform with the land uses, uh, in your Comprehensive Airport Land Use Plan. The second category that we have to look at, as Jason mentioned, I think, was the, the height considerations. And in this case, there are two kinds of height considerations we have to look at. What you'll see in the black lines on the drawing here are what from the FAR Part seventy-seven, uh, airspace diagram. And that's primarily for aircraft landing on the runway. So as they, whether it's for, uh, runway thirty or for, uh, runway twelve at the other end. And you'll see, looking at the drawing, that those are different because you have an instrument, precision instrument approach from the southeast to runway thirty. So we've looked at those, uh, factors and we look at the, the height limits that are associated, uh, within that drawing. And the maximal allowable height for buildings within the project to comply with FAR Part seventy-seven would be about a hundred and fifty feet. The highest building that's recommended, uh, in this area is actually the freeway sign, which is eighty-five feet. And the tallest building is only seventy-five feet. So again, the proposed project is compatible, uh, and conforms with your twenty-twelve Comprehensive Airport Land Use Plan. There is another height consideration that FAA has that often gets overlooked, and that is for departures. So in this case, we have to look at, it's called the United States Standard for Terminal Instrument Procedures, or TERPs, which relates to, in this case, aircraft departing on runway twelve and, and taking off to the southeast. And I've never understood why thi- this regulation has been on the books forever, but it's only in recent years that is, it has been applied and considered, uh, more thoroughly than it used to be. So we've looked at that and the critical area for the project is a parcel. It's about three point seven acres in the northeast corner of the project. And in that area, the allowable height for these, this TERPs criteria is a hundred feet. And the maximum height of a structure proposed is forty-five feet. So again, we have a conformity with the twenty-twelve Comprehensive Airport Land Use Plan. The third part of the picture is to look at the aircraft noise. And that's shown in the top figure on this drawing here. And again, we look at the noise contours and you'll see that the proposed project in red is well outside not just the sixty-five CNEL, which is usually the criteria for sensitive land uses like residential uses, nursing homes, things like tha- that. The proposed project is well outside the fifty-five, uh, CNEL contour. So again, the project conforms with the, uh, twenty-twelve Comprehensive, uh, Land Use Plan uh, with regard to the noise, uh, consideration. Uh, the other thing I want to mention is, is not a requirement from your, well, twenty, uh, twenty-twelve Comprehensive Land Use Plan, but it's a requirement that FAA has, that whenever you're proposing to de- develop a structure near an airport that penetrates a one to one hundred slope within twenty thousand feet of an airport, then you have to submit the, the information on your structures to FAA so they can do an airspace review to see if there is any potential impact to air navigation. So we've talked to FAA before we submitted this information and they have considered both the situation that relates to the existing runway length of six thousand five hundred feet and the future eight thousand foot runway. So they've looked at both. And this is looked at by the FAA planners, the FAA environmental people, the FAA engineering people, as well as the airspace and the, their air traffic experts. So we were delighted to, to receive on Monday, uh, documentation from the FAA that for, I think we submitted six or seven structures plus the highway sign to them separately. Individu- they did individual analyses. And for each of those eight items, they sent back a similar letter that says they've determined that the building in question or the highway sign is not an issue with regard to airspace. So that just came in on Monday. So those are some of the key factors that relate to the aviation issues associated, uh, with this project. Also, uh, with regard to your responsibilities as the ALUC, uh, there will be a requirement for navigation easements, uh, for all of the projects that are developed uh, as part of, uh, Sequoia Gateway and also deed notification. So the people developing in this area are made aware legally that, uh, their project is in the vicinity of an airport. Uh, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, that you might have.
If we could move on to Bert quickly here.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Aaron. Um, so Chairman, Members of the Commission, Bert Verips, Environmental Consultant, uh, assisting your staff on the preparation of the EIR. Um, the EIR covers a lot of issues and I, in the interest of time, I really don't want to review those now. I, but I would like to highlight some important ones. Um, the biggest constraint, uh, to development of this project is, uh, traffic capacity at the interchange of- of Ninety-Nine and Caldwell Avenue. And as Steve mentioned, the applicant went through great pains to right-size Phase One of the project so that they would not exceed the capacity of that interchange. Our traffic consultants and the applicant worked closely with Caltrans for almost two years, several meetings, to make sure that they concurred with the traffic analysis and methodologies, and also with the design aspects of the project, and they have concurred. So we believe we will not be getting any opposition from Caltrans on this project since we've worked with them. As Steve mentioned also, interchange is being reconstructed probably by 2024. At that point, and perhaps sooner, Phase Two will, will be able to develop as that traffic capacity on the interchange gets freed up. The other issue that I want to touch on is, is an issue that was of concern to the City of Visalia in their initial letters on, in the initial scoping of this, and that was competitive effects to businesses in Visalia and throughout the county. So we had a detailed study done by TNDG, urban economists and experts in analyzing retail competitiveness, and they concluded that there is far more demand projected in the area in the near term and in the midterm, 2024, 2030, to accommodate Phase One up through 2024, and then the entire project, 2030, with, with, with demands to spare. And we all, they also looked at actually all other projects in the pipeline, commercial projects, added up all those square, all the square footage of those projects, compared, compared that to, to the demand out there, and concluded that there still would be excess demand after all those projects and Sequoia Gateway are constructed.
Who did the study?
Sorry?
Who was, who did the study?
Ken Kellyhorn?
No, TNDG.
Oh, T.
TNDG, the Nattleson Dale Group.
Who are they?
They're urban economists in Yorba Linda. Their, their study is attached to the EIR. And finally, on that note also, I'd like to mention that they also did focused analyses on five major retail areas in Tulare County, including the Mooney Boulevard Corridor, downtown Visalia, downtown Tulare, the Tulare Outlets and Prosperity Avenue, and found that none of those areas would be adversely affected by this project, that there would be no business closures as a result of this project, even at build-out. So, so we were able to conclude then, under SEQA, that there would be no potential for urban decay, which is a SEQA issue, as a result of this project. And the final thing I want to mention, highlight, is the air quality study. We've worked closely, our air quality consultants worked closely with Hector and his staff, who worked closely with the air district to make sure that the analysis met their requirements and that the mitigations also met, were satisfactory to that. And I'll wrap it up there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Is that included in our packet? The, what we supplied to you for this workshop was your, the specific plan and the overall SEQA document. We didn't want to over-innundate you with all the background technical studies. They will be provided to you through the final EIR and the actual agenda item for this project. They are all available online. You were given notice when the draft EIR is put out on the street. That, that notice did include a link to our website. Our website has all the technical studies, as was given to us, notice for this project. But if you go to the website, all the technical studies are on there. And we did provide the information as far as what was recently provided for ALUC. That was discussed earlier, as far as the report from Ares, so you have that via email as well. But we, we will provide you the whole agenda item packet all over again for the next meeting. The next, next meeting.
All right. Save this?
You can, Velma would appreciate if you save that, but if you want to kill some more trees, go for it.
I just wanted to make a comment. If we are analyzing documents like this, we need a raise to a hundred dollars an hour. Especially if we're trying to be subjective, you know, kind of like you guys.
Your pitch is being considered right now, and we appreciate your efforts regardless if you're volunteering or not. We do understand this is a, a lot of information, so we're hoping, and we are trying to get a lot, as stated before, we're trying to get a lot of agenda items up to the board this, by the end of the, close this year, so it's, it's a lot of work, we understand, but we're, we're getting pretty close to the end of this year, and after that, it'll hopefully be a little bit of smooth sailing as my boss keeps promising me. Soon, soon.
Any other questions?
I just probably want to make a comment, I, you know, just because I know about this project, but I, it seems like we're really fast-tracking, but it's been on the books for...
GPI 2013.
Yes.
Burt's been working on CIR for five years. Steve's been working on this project for five years. Jason just began to touch this project, but Hector, I, and company have really been looking at it hard for last year, year and a half.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentations. Well done. Is there a director's report?
I think we're good for today, just, just to know.
We will adjourn our planning...
Hold on one second, hold on one second, just so you know, we'll probably be hearing this case and Dollar General case next time, and on the twenty-eighth, you'll hear Poplar and, no, that should be about it. So Poplar or Dollar General might call on the twenty-eighth, and then, or the fourteenth, depending. But the next two meetings, yes, please, please be here.
Don't leave early, right.
Next meeting is November fourteenth, and we'll reconvene. This meeting is adjourned.